Can I have everyone's attention, please? I'd like to conclude the open house at this point.
Commissioners, please report to your chairs.
Right. I'd like to note for the record that Commissioner Wasserman has joined us.
(inaudible).
(laughing).
We're not allowed to tuck some name tags.
Did you know Mike was going to be here?
Oh, it's out.
I wanted to ask him about his wife going to Ghana.
Yes, I've said too much.
A Bob Luxembourg is going to Ghana, and I assume it's his.
He didn't tell me about that.
We'll get the...
Sent you an email.
I saw it.
Good. That's a long conversation. I got the coffee.
All right, are we ready to reconvene? I think so. The first thing I'd like to do is have somebody suggest that we approve the agenda for the evening.
I make the motion to approve the agenda this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Next thing I'd like to do is see if we have a motion for approval of the minutes from the May 17th and June 14th meetings.
We approve the minutes for May 17th and June 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. With that, Cameron, will you please review our work program calendar for us?
Yes, Madam Chair, Cameron Grohl with the Community Development Department. As usual, we're keeping kind of two sets of calendars, our old traditional horizontal one, and maybe more importantly, the vertical one is what we've been using for this process. You can see at the top, we've graded out the meetings that have been completed. We have three more meetings showing today on this calendar. And at the bottom, additional dates are shown as a "to be determined." I think the direction we've had from the Commission is to get through tonight and probably get through your meeting on the 12th of July, and you'll probably be reassessing the calendar a little bit at that point. We'll know a little bit more about where we are in the process and what additional meetings might be scheduled. As was announced last time, we're not looking anymore. We'd originally talked about meetings in August, and we're not looking at that anymore because we have a problem with staff and Commissioner availability, and it's typically a month we veer away from here in Sammish to be sensitive to the public's schedules as well. So we're looking probably at additional meetings going into September, but those are unknown at the moment. So tonight, you do have some tasks at hand. You're finishing up, in a sense, the first part of our process to identify issues and advance issues for further consideration. Evan will talk to you more about that when he makes his initial staff presentation, but looking forward, we'll go through looking at an evaluation mechanism, your public hearing, deliberations, and then a final decision. So that's what's coming up.
Any questions about the calendar?
Have we picked any dates in September if there are extra meetings?
We haven't picked any extra meeting dates. I would say that members of the public can already look, and I think it's September 6th and 20th are the first and third Thursdays. I think we'll be back on the first and third as a get-back-to-your-normal meeting times through the rest of the year. So those are the known dates at this point, would be the first and third. Additional dates, I think we still need to talk with the Chair and Vice Chair about, and I think we'll know more after that meeting on the 12th.
Thank you.
I would like to propose, too, instead of having extra meetings, we talk about the idea of having later meetings. I would much rather, as a planning commissioner, be here until 10:00 or 11:00 than have extra meetings. So, and I think that's something that the leadership should talk about and maybe have a vote on when we decide.
Definitely. I'd love to have feedback from each of you about what works well for your schedules, and we'll try to put something together that we think will accommodate the Commission as a whole as well as we can. So please provide us with that feedback, or if we need to add a meeting, if there are certain weeks or dates that just absolutely aren't available, that would be useful.
And let's try to do that in ways we've done it before, which is, once we get some direction from the Chair and Vice Chair, Debbie will do a little solicitation and see what those options are and see what Commissioners like.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that we consider that option.
No, I definitely appreciate the input, thank you very much.
Just one correction, it's showing on 9/6 I'm absent. Actually, I am around, I think, when dates have moved from August to September, this is the remainder, so I think, just strike my name down for my absence.
That's good news.
Thank you for that reminder. Anything else on calendar before I go into the Director's Report?
So I just want to clarify for everyone, and just a little bit of kind of working through as we go. At the next meeting, we are likely not going to officially communicate any additional meetings, but we will definitely talk about, as a Commission, how many we might need, what that schedule might look like, and probably to prepare us for a conversation with the Mayor and Deputy Mayor, okay? So, and out of that, we will come back and communicate a formal schedule, but I think everybody can quite clearly see that there is likely going to be a need for more meetings. So just to kind of let you know, the next meeting, we may not have any more explicit clarity around that, but definitely before the August break, we will. That's our plan, okay? I don't know if that's helpful, but...
Thank you. No, that is helpful, thank you. Shall I proceed in Director's Report?
Please.
Try to keep it very brief, actually, very little in the planning and zoning and kind of comprehensive of your world at the City Council these days. They've been occupied with other subjects, most recently, the city's fire services, so there's been articles in the paper and a lot of talk back and forth on that. So I don't think we'll want to take our time on that right now, but that's probably occupying the Council's attention. I'm glad the Chair brought up the fact that there is a mechanism by which the Commission can communicate through the Chair and Vice Chair to the Council through the Mayor and Deputy Mayor, and so those meetings are taking place monthly regularly. Well, also, we've got on the calendar right now, I don't know if this one shows it, probably doesn't. There's typically a fall joint meeting, and we will, once we get that date, I'll nail down, we'll get that reported out to everybody, too. So that'll be an opportunity for everybody to get together. Depending on how this schedule looks, well, I'm not sure how that joint, when that joint meeting will be scheduled, but that will be another opportunity down the road. Happy to answer any questions about Council process or other things on the short Director's Report.
The newspaper also reported that Eastlake-Sammish Parkway is going to be coming our way. Do you have any projections on those dates?
Well, you remember the joint meeting, we held up all of the stuff for the ECA process and said, "We need to get this done first." The Council said, "Yes, you do," so that's your charge right now. So I think we both know as much as each other about when. So I think, once we know a little bit more about the ECA schedule, I can then predict a little bit more about the transportation level of service issue, which relates to the Parkway. And I think there's a potential chance to get that subject started the end of this year, it's just hard for me to predict right now.
It sounded like it was a very high level of importance for the City Council.
Well, you know, I think there are some Council members that do place it as a high level of importance. The direction we have from the full Council is finish this first.
It's not higher than ECA.[526.16][526.16](laughing). But yeah, we'll be talking about the schedule for both topics when we get together with Mayor and Deputy Mayor, so we can probably answer that question a little bit more clearly at the last meeting in July.
Yes.
Other questions? Great.
Thank you very much. With that, I think first step is a staff presentation, is that right, Evan? So he'll start some material for you.
So we're going to take public comment at the end?
Yes, Chair.
I would actually like to have the staff presentation, and then public comment, and then go through each of the recommendations. So just a slight change to the agenda, I apologize for not noticing that earlier. That way, we can have the public comment prior to the recommendation discussion.
That actually works well with how we've set up the PowerPoint.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to remind members of the public to please sign up on the sign-up sheet if you'd like to provide comment tonight.
So, of course, we've had the open house already. I'm happy to see that we've gotten at least some written comments. I would encourage people to turn in written comments, too, at any point during this process. I was going to briefly go over kind of the materials that are in your resource guide here, just a brief discussion about what we might be looking at on the 12th, and then start diving into the recommendation memo number four. After public comment, as the Chair noted, we'll get into, again, direction from the Planning Commission on the specific amendments for our subsequent discussions. With that, there are a couple of new items in your resource guide that I'll just call to your attention very quickly here. The staff recommendation memo number four, this, of course, comes from the best available science report that we reviewed on June 14th, relates to erosion hazard, erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, and landslide hazard area. The middle two items on the slide in front of you, the written comment summary matrix and the Q&amp;A matrix, coming from the June 14th meeting and from tonight, have been added into your resource guide, I believe, today. They were also put onto our website today and are available here on the table behind me. These go through, in particular, the written comment summary matrix, just to note, go through this past Tuesday, the 26th. I did get a couple of public comments on Wednesday and Thursday, which I haven't been able to get into the written memo yet, we'll get that in as soon as we can. And then the last item, of course, would be staff recommendation memo number five. Remind the Planning Commission, this is our administrative changes to the code related to how the ECA regulations are administered, procedural primarily, but worth noting as part of our overall review context. So speaking to our process on July 12th, we've been working with the PC leadership, Planning Commission leadership, a little bit to, in terms of figuring out how we want to handle the review as we're going into July 12th and beyond. Recall to the Planning Commission that at the joint meeting, the direction that we got from the City Council was to be thorough, inclusive, and well-documented. And so that's what we've been focusing on as we put together some materials for you to look at on the 12th. In particular, we've identified kind of two aspects to the review conversation, if you will. The first is that it probably makes sense to break out some of these amendments to our regulations into items that are relatively minor in nature and could be addressed maybe by, as a single review, or don't require a full in-depth review. And then items that are more substantive in nature, and I'm going to pick on a couple, but the site-specific buffer review, for example, for streams or wetlands, the idea of perhaps allowing development in the no disturbance area. These are items that probably require more deliberation, I'm guessing, on the part of the Planning Commission, and we begin to put together some tools for the Planning Commission to go through that review. We'll be presenting those to you on the July 12th meeting for your kind of initial blessing as we move forward. Chair, did you want to add anything? I sensed that you might.
Continue.
So the goal for tonight, moving off the process, then, would be that we are looking for the Planning Commission to provide any additional direction on the items that we've identified in memo number four, again, related to the erosion hazard area, the landslide hazard area, and the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, and to advance the selected items, selected amendments, rather, onto our eventual discussions here in July and beyond. Of course, source for the recommendations remains the same. We are looking at the best available science reports that were reviewed by the Planning Commission on the 14th, and then the public comment that we've received to date. And with that, I'm going to leap into the actual recommendations coming from the consultant. The first item, first recommendation, rather, coming from the consultant was to further define, in the erosion hazard area, when it is appropriate for the city to allow seasonal, to allow grading outside of normal seasonal restrictions. Remind the Planning Commission that normally, within the erosion hazard area, we limit site construction to the dry summer months, typically May through end of September or so. I mean, May is often wet here, but May through September is the formal timeline. We allow for some exceptions to that based upon the recommendations of a geotechnical or geologist, geotechnical engineer or geologist. We don't have a good, clear track record or set of criteria as to when those exceptions are appropriate. We typically rely on the professional recommendation. Right now, what this amendment would do is clarify when it is appropriate and improve our consistency. Recommendation number two, again, related to the erosion hazard area, would specify what actions the city should take in correcting any erosion or sediment-water quality issue that we might have during an active construction project. This would be things like putting in baker tanks around a site. Baker tanks separate sediment from water before the water is then discharged back into the natural environment. Looking at improving our erosion sediment control, maybe requiring a full shutdown of the site until water quality was returned to an acceptable level, that type of thing. Again, the city staff is recommending that we advance this amendment. It improves clarity, it also matches, frankly, what we've been doing in terms of existing practice. Recommendation number three, this is related, this next block of recommendations are related to the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, and in particular, the no disturbance area. This recommendation focuses on how we identify and who identifies the top of the no disturbance area. You recall, in the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, there are two distinct features that we regulate currently. One is the no disturbance area, it's the sloped valley walls leading down to the lake, and then at the top, there are those areas that drain to the no disturbance area. What this amendment will do is clarify how you identify the top of the first feature, the no disturbance area, and then secondarily, provide more specific guidance to the city as to who does that type of identification. In this case, probably either a surveyor or a specific qualified geologist. It also does eliminate some confusing terminology in the current definition. We are recommending you advance that amendment. Recommendation number four is, frankly, a recommendation to the city related to some mapping documents that we have on our website currently. The maps are a little bit out of date in terms of their terminology. We have one map on there that still refers to the SO-190 overlay. For those who don't know, the SO-190 was the original name of the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay. The consultants just recommended that we update all of our maps to be more precise. It's not a code amendment, per se, it is a map amendment. Recommendation number five is to clarify, it's to clarify a specific provision of the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay. In particular, you may recall, a moment ago, I described the two features we regulate in the overlay, the no disturbance area and the area that drains to the no disturbance area. This is related to the second set of features, and what this does is require that we infiltrate for areas that currently drain to the no disturbance area as opposed to historically drained to the no disturbance area. It's a relatively rare situation, but we do have some situations where properties that used to drain to the no disturbance area have since been ditched or otherwise altered and no longer drain that direction, and this takes them out of the infiltration requirement. Staff is recommending that we advance this amendment as well. It would be, you know, frankly, addressing the current site conditions rather than historic site conditions. Recommendation number six is to revise the regulations to clarify the drainage, in-drainage design in the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, what best available science would dictate. In particular, what the consultant has proposed is that the staff remove some language that talks about designing a drainage outlet using best available science, and replace that language with a very specific standard, requiring a tight line past the erosion or landslide hazard area, and requiring, of course, a level two flow control, which is a drainage standard that meters water leaving the site at a certain rate. City is recommending that we not advance this regulation. Frankly, for the primary purpose here is that the consultant has identified the current known best available science solution for this type of feature. City thinks that the current language is actually a little bit more flexible in that it does acknowledge that there may be other design, drainage design outlets out there that we may not know of or may not have contemplated at this point, but that certainly would be appropriate for development to propose when moving forward. So we do see that this proposed amendment would eliminate some flexibility that's in our code right now that we think is actually appropriate to preserve. Recommendation number seven, this is now getting into the landslide hazard area, so we've moved through the erosion hazard area, through the overlay, we're now into the landslide hazard area regulations. The current landslide hazard area buffers, remind you, these are what used to be called steep slopes, are applied from the top toe and sides of a steep slope area or a landslide hazard area. Consultant has actually recommended that we eliminate the "from the sides" part of that buffer, noting that, you know, really, there's not any protection value added to requiring a separation parallel on the slope, if, so to speak, for the house from a steep slope buffer. We do think that this is clearly supported by best available science, and we are recommending that you advance it as part of your review. Recommendation number eight, again, related to landslide hazard areas, refers specifically to an exemption that the city currently has in its code. So remind the Planning Commission that currently, the city regulates any quote-unquote "steep slope" landslide hazard area with a vertical relief of more than 10 feet and a gradient of more than 40 percent. If your vertical relief is greater than 10 feet but less than 20 feet, so it's a 10 to 20-foot tall slope, we do have some specific exemption language built into our code right now, where a geologist or a geotechnical engineer could recommend that the city actually exempt this slope from protections, specifically buffers and other alteration standards. It's based upon a site-specific analysis, it's based upon a technical reviewer's recommendation. The consultant essentially noted that in this Seattle study that they looked at, and I'm not citing it here correctly tonight, but it is in their best available science report, that there was a slightly increased risk of landslides on slopes of this type, greater than 10 feet tall, less than 20 feet tall, and they recommended evaluating whether or not this exemption was appropriate for the city to include in their, in their code, in our code, the critical areas recommendations. The city staff, again, is recommending that we not advance this particular amendment onto July. The current exemption is based, as I mentioned a moment ago, on site-specific analysis by a qualified professional. It does provide flexibility in a lot of circumstances where we might have a very minor landslide hazard area constraining an otherwise relatively straightforward lot to build on, at least from an engineering perspective. So it does eliminate both flexibility, and it seems to be a little bit, a little bit too conservative in terms of risk management. Recommendation number nine addresses a specific provision that was added into our landslide hazard area regulations, again, related to drainage. Please keep in mind, this is not speaking to the overlay right now, we're focusing just on landslide hazard areas. And what this regulation does is specify how drainage should be handled in the landslide hazard area. And in particular, what it promotes is that the city should evaluate infiltration first as part of a landslide, as part of a drainage design, before moving on to a tight line or other best available science drainage design. The consultant has proposed eliminating all of the drainage language in this section of code, and what they've recommended instead is that the city should refer back to the surface water design manual that we just recently adopted, either the 1998 manual for small sites or 2009 manual for large sites. And in particular, they're recommending this because infiltration above a landslide hazard area actually has the effect of introducing water into an area that may slide, and water is one of the primary sources for landslides itself. So this does appear to be supported clearly by best available science, and the city is recommending that we advance this amendment onto our subsequent discussions. Recommendation number 10 is, frankly, in the area of it may be administrative, it may be more in the substantive part of the code, I've included it here because the consultant felt that it got to our substantive regulations. And in particular, what they've recommended is that the city, frankly, clarifying that the city has the option to require a third-party review of geotechnical reports in a landslide hazard area. Currently, what we do is we require a third-party review of geotechnical reports on a bit of a case-by-case basis. If we run into a situation where we have historically had landslides, for example, and that's not acknowledged by the geotechnical report, or there's something else about the report that seems to raise concerns on the part of staff, it's not consistent with other reports we've had in that same vicinity, that's often the case where we currently send it out for a peer review by the city's on-call consultant. This amendment will clarify, of course, that we have that authority to do, and then also, frankly, match our existing practice. It would leave us the option to acquire this. There has been a little bit of confusion, as a side note here, as to what third-party review means, and I'd just like to clarify for a moment, if I may. When an applicant comes in to propose modifying a geo-hazard of some type, be it a landslide hazard area or some other type, the city requires that the property owner or the applicant provide us with a geotechnical report prepared by a qualified professional, typically a licensed geologist or licensed geotechnical engineer. The third-party review, so that would be the first party's report, and they're providing it to the city for essentially a second-party review, that would be in the city staff. The third-party review that we're referring to here in this case is sending it out to a consultant hired or under contract, frankly, with the city for their analysis of the findings of the geotechnical report prepared by the property owner. That review often assists the city staff in making sure that we're reviewing and frankly approving a project that's appropriate. In some cases, we're not, we don't have geotechnical engineers on staff, this provides additional expertise for the city staff review. Does that make sense? Moving on to recommendation number 11, so as I noted a moment ago, city does require geotechnical reports. We don't actually specify factors of safety in terms of how safe a development should be when we're authorizing an alteration to a landslide hazard area. This amendment would change that. This amendment would specify a factor of safety of 1.5. We did have a question last week regarding how that factor of safety of 1.5 was identified. That's actually in the comment summary matrix, I'll just note for the record, under the Q&amp;A matrix that was handed out tonight. And I can go into more detail as needed during discussion. Pardon me. The consultant's recommendation, pardon me, the previous recommendation, we are recommending that you advance on to our subsequent review. Recommendation number 12, this is frankly clarifying the definition of a landslide hazard area in a couple of different ways. We have some language that was adopted in 2005, we failed to eliminate an older section of definitions at that time related to that steep slope definition that I was referring to a moment ago. And then we are also clarifying, and this would be a bit of a change, how we evaluate where that 40 percent slope is, we're being more specific. The consultant, as you may recall, talked about where we identify the top and the toe of the slopes using advanced geometry beyond my pay grade, frankly. We are recommending that we advance this amendment on, it would provide further clarification as to how we identify these features in the field and in review. Recommendation 4-13, this is revising the definition of geologist we currently have in our code. State law has changed, and we have not kept up to the state law definition, and we're just updating this to require the, or to reflect, rather, the state's requirements for licensing, and we are recommending to advance this item. Sadly, item 14 was a repeat of item 13. I have to admit, I'm, again, not perfect, and so there's no action required on item 14, or on item 14, I apologize for that. Remarkably, I got no public comment on that beforehand, though. I'm sure everybody read my memo.
Actually, item 14 references a second reference in the code, so maybe we should keep that one.
Yeah, well, except that I combined that into item 13 at the time, thinking that maybe I was being more efficient, and then neglected to delete.
We're happy to reduce the number of recommendations we need to consider.
It drops us back below an 80, which seems good. And then, of course, the big recommendation contained in this memo, perhaps, is a recommendation, frankly, coming from a lot of the public comment you've heard so far, and this is related to allowing development, and frankly, more specifically, subdivision within the no disturbance area of the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay. We've had a number of different flavors of this proposed to the Planning Commission. I have characterized them all here as allowing development in the no disturbance area, and that's probably a very broad characterization on my part. Some people have recommended eliminating the overlay entirely, some have focused on, frankly, specifying four subdivisions, and I would encourage the Planning Commission to review the public comments that I've included in your memo and here on the screen to make sure that you're aware of that public comment. The city is recommending that we advance this amendment on into our subsequent review. I will... Some people have recommended eliminating the overlay entirely, some have focused on, frankly specifying four subdivisions, and I would encourage the planning commission to review the public comments that I've included in your memo and here on the screen to make sure that you're aware of that public comment. The city is recommending that we advance this amendment on into our subsequent review. I will note that the consultant has addressed this particular question in their best available science report, and recommended that it is not, or as noted, rather, that it is not supported by best available science. So staff does have some follow-up work to do in terms of identifying perhaps another policy basis that the planning commission could consider in adopting such an amendment, and identifying appropriate mechanisms or appropriate controls for the planning commission to consider as part of any amendment we might present forward. And with that, I think I'm waiting for the planning commission direction, so I think this might be the appropriate time for public comment.
So, yes, I do think, are you, do you have a presentation about the administrative modifications as well?
I had not intended to go through those explicitly unless requested by the planning commission, I haven't heard such a request yet.
Okay, so we'll get to that. Let's go ahead and conclude this portion of the agenda, and start with public comment. So I have two sign-up sheets, again, if you would like to provide public comment, and you haven't signed up, we will have an opportunity for you to do that at the end of the group that's signed up. The first person that I have is Greg Crabby? Crabby, Crabby? Crabby, great. And I'd like to remind everybody to state your name and your address, and that there is a seven-minute limit for public testimony.
Good evening, my name is Greg Crabby, 1726 Holbrook Avenue, Everett, Washington. And first, obviously, I am a proponent for eliminating the no disturbance zone in the erosion hazard area near sensitive water bodies, or near water bodies. And first, I'd like to thank staff for forwarding or advancing this position for additional review. I think also, I have recently submitted a letter which is requesting that AMET kind of clarify some of the science that underlies their conclusions in this section of their report. And so I would ask that you guys have a look at that, and also, when they respond, I think it's important that you look at it as well. And then, once again, would like to, again, request that we have a stakeholders' meeting someday in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Osgood as a maybe, would Mr. Osgood like to speak? Great. Following Mr. Osgood, we have Mr. Radaba. Mr. Sorenson did not indicate, so he would be, he says no, and then after that, Ms. Tiliakos. So we've got Osgood, Radaba, Tiliakos.
Jim Osgood, 19661 Southeast 24th Way in Samamish. I just added a public comment. Evan was nice enough to send me the reference list for the 2005 decision regarding erosion hazard near sensitive water body, and I've asked that to be put into public comment for your review. From what I could tell, that most of the best available science related to the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies was related to landslide, streambed erosion, shoreline, or just maps. There was no section at all in there, there was an erosion hazard section, but no erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies section that related specifically referencing the science behind making that decision. And I believe that this is an important enough decision that, you know, when you're talking about taking your property rights as we have with the no disturbance area, that it warrants a review of the science, and to be able to really get an understanding of what the science is that requires a no disturbance area within the erosion hazard area, so that we can actually see that and not just be guessing at it. And then also have the references specific to the no disturbance area. The other comments are, put a few more comments up on the board there too today, so I'm sure those will go into public comment as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radaba?
Good evening, Sam Radaba, 1905 216th Avenue Southeast. And I'm providing comment tonight as legal counsel on behalf of Jim Osgood and Rob Capella. They are owners of real property that are burdened within the city's no disturbance area within the erosion hazard near sensitive water body special overlay district. In my comments at the June 14th meeting, I observed that the city's current regulations, especially the no disturbance overlay, are in conflict with the Washington Administrative Code. Under the WAC, it is only, quote, "when technology cannot reduce risks to acceptable levels" that building in geologically hazardous areas must be avoided, end quote. Stated conversely, "When technology exists to reduce the risks of development to acceptable levels, development should be allowed." The report from the city's consultant readily concedes that with the implementation of best management practices, it is technologically feasible to reduce the risks of construction in the no disturbance area to acceptable levels. Quote, "It may be technically possible to develop a site without impacting downstream resources through implementation of robust temporary erosion and sedimentation control plan with site monitoring, contingency plans, and other measures," end quote. I am also concerned by one of the primary rationales that has been proffered thus far to support extending or continuing the no disturbance overlay, and that is that somehow that Samamish is simply geographically unique. Washington has 39 counties and currently has 281 cities, all of which are under the identical obligation under the Growth Management Act to designate and protect critical areas. Neither I nor the city's consultants, nor anyone else that has addressed the commission, appears to be aware of another jurisdiction in the entire state that has adopted such onerous regulations within an erosion hazard area, especially a no disturbance overlay. Out of 39 counties and 281 cities, are we really to believe that Samamish is that unique? We don't have to look statewide, we can look at our peer jurisdictions of Issaquah and Redmond. Issaquah has successfully and continues to develop the Highlands in an area that is similar to Samamish's erosion hazard area. I'm also concerned that our remedy is not proportionate to the alleged risk of allowing development in the erosion, in the no disturbance overlay. The entire thrust of the city's best available science report addresses temporary concerns regarding sedimentation and phosphorus loading that may occur during the construction phase of development. In particular, the report implies that the imposition of the no disturbance overlay is necessary to combat temporary construction-related impacts. And this observation was sustained by the comments of the city's consultant, as well as the city's senior planner, Evan Maxim, during that June 14th meeting. First, the city's consultant, quote, "This overlay is really geared to the construction phase," end quote. The consultant went on to clarify that once construction is completed, developed sites effectively stabilize, and the comparably low risk of further sedimentation and phosphorus loading then becomes a product of the use of the property. Mr. Maxim echoed those comments, quote, "It is fair to characterize the overlay primarily as focusing on regulations around the developing condition rather than the developed condition. The erosion and sediment control is something that we use when you're developing a property, when it's open and dirt is exposed to the elements," end quote. In other words, it appears, there appears to be consensus that the inherently temporary phase of construction is what presents the greatest risk to Lake Samamish. Why then is the solution in the city's code to prohibit development altogether so devastatingly permanent? Let's not resort to a tourniquet to stop the bleeding of a paper cut. As a city, we're historically much more sophisticated and better problem solvers than that. And if you look at the matrix that has been submitted tonight from the city's consultant on comment number five, again, everything in there states the temporary nature of the concern, that best management practices typically are not 100% effective at removing sediment over the range of storm events that may occur during construction. The next sentence, "There are also risks that improper implementation will result in further release of sediments and phosphorus from erosion soils disturbed during construction." Again, this appears to be a temporary concern during the construction phase, not a permanent problem that we can't solve. I'm asking that the commission take a close look at this issue, and I would urge you to support the removal of the no disturbance overlay in favor of appropriate mitigation measures that eliminate the temporary impacts of construction within these areas. Thank you.
No question.
I'm sorry, we have a few questions from the commission.
Did you give us a reference to the WAC citation that you provided? I don't remember hearing it.
I'd be happy to, that's WAC 365, 190, 120, subsection 2. And this title and chapter of the WAC is what implements the Growth Management Act, and it walks through your various critical areas. Keep in mind that it erosion-
I think you've answered the question.
An erosion hazard area is part of-
We understand, I think you've answered the question. Commissioner Lipinski.
Sometimes, when someone feels they're meant to grieve by government, they'll sue. And you're saying there's a conflict between the WAC and the current implementation. I just want to have an idea of what it would cost a homeowner to sue the city and go to trial and have a jury decide, it's just a rough ballpark figure of cost.
Well, they're two different things. One would be an appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board claiming that the adoption of this, of retaining this overlay is inconsistent with the Growth Management Act and these WACs. That's a different lawsuit from a homeowner who alleges that, as applied to their property, there has been a regulatory taking. A regulatory taking that could easily be $100,000 case, an appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board, which actually challenges the ordinance itself, anywhere from 30 to 50.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yes. Will you be addressing what your clients and yourself see as acceptable levels of risk?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we had asked for at that June 14th meeting, it's very difficult, I think, in this setting to be able to dig into the weeds and figure out all of the solutions. You know, we've been asking for a meeting with the planning director and city staff to be able to have a free dialogue about what best management practices could be implemented, and, you know, what would effectively result in eliminating the risk or leaving the risk at a level that it's acceptable to undertake that, rather than, as I mentioned, using a tourniquet to stop a paper cut.
So on that note, we did hear that request at the last meeting, there's actually been additional requests of a similar nature on other topics related to this particular part of the code, and staff is working on setting up some discussions that will hopefully address that request. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into some of the planning commission discussion later. We have one final question, I believe, from Commissioner Wasserman.
Sure, I'm not sure if this is a question that you can answer, but I'm one, a question I'm sure has been thought about, hopefully. If a landowner wants to build on one of these pieces of properties and goes through this, all this rigmarole, I'm just curious what homeowners' insurance or people's insurance tends to think about building in these areas that are adjacent to one of these type of things? Are we putting homeowners at risk of losing their insurance by the city saying, "Well, okay, we'll change this," but then the insurance company may say, "Not so much here."
Yeah, and your question is a great one, Commissioner Wasserman. I think it gets to the difference between typically a city regulates steep slopes, and then, in some cases like Samamish, you have these erosion hazard areas. If you look at the definition of a geologically hazardous area, it's one that poses, it's a critical area because of the risk it poses to human health and safety. This really is not a good fit, because the only concerns that have been raised about this critical area is sedimentation and phosphorus loading to the lake, it's not about human safety. So the concerns you typically run into with insurance are related to where you establish that building in the area is going to be a hazard to the home itself, its occupants, and the neighbors. No one I'm aware of in this process has made an assertion, and not even the city's consultant, that allowing construction within the no disturbance area would be a public safety issue, and that's where insurance really has an issue. Instead, this is about sedimentation to the lake, which is far removed from the concerns you're usually dealing with on the insurance issue.
Well, the only thing I was asking about, because we're talking about landslides and things of that nature, that's kind of a big insurance issue, they don't like that.
Landslides are a problem. I've actually worked on cases in the city of Seattle where we've proven that with the right engineering, allowing development will actually shore up an unstable hillside better than, better than leaving it in its natural state.
Agreed.
So it does get into some complicated issues. I think the erosion, the no disturbance overlay is sort of a different issue than the public safety issue.
Thank you, Mr. Radaba. We have Ms. Tiliakos, and then I have a possibly on Ms. Botenko. I don't know if you're a no? No. And then Ms. Richardson, potentially will follow Ms. Tiliakos. You can go ahead and start, I'll-
No, I need Debbie.
Oh, okay. I apologize then. We have a request for Debbie.
Erica Tiliakos, 1130 Lancaster Way, Southeast, Samamish.
While we're waiting briefly, Ms. Stahl, will you be providing testimony tonight? Yes, okay, great, thank you. And Ms. Richardson, yes, no?
No.
No, great. And Mr. Crispin would like to be added?
Tell us yes or no on Crispin.
Yes.
I'm sorry, pardon?
He answered.
We are in the process of trying to assess risks, and I don't, I don't think that we really understand what the risks are and to really see the kind of devastation that we're talking about in landslide hazards. Dr. Derek Booth was very instrumental in mapping the area, actually doing some of his scientific work here. In 2005, he did provide an email communication with Cameron Gurrell specifically about the maps of the no disturbance area and the runoff into the no disturbance zone. And I'm just going to quickly read this because it's very adequate. Maybe I just have too many memories of the bad old days, but the language in 21A85060 is scary, the proposed. A drainage system that will not significantly increase the risk of landslide erosion to the no disturbance area? How, where? Has anyone been paying attention? During preparation of the basin plan, we spent a very long time trying to solve this problem. What do you do when every increment of increased stormwater appears to have a direct negative response to the channel, and thence into Lake Samamish? When there is no buffering capacity, I mean, maybe there was, used to be, but it's all gone, development in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, and alas, beyond, got there first and used it all up. For the basin plan, we could only come up with two answers, infiltrate it all or bypass it all. There is no third option. I don't remember if at the time we believed that sufficiently severe detention might be a last alternative, but subsequent published research, aka best available science, has laid that hope to rest. I'm sorry truly that pipelines have not fixed this problem, and that they also bring the potential for unintended consequences. I know that the city must be pressured by property owners who want to build out, just like the other guy, but if you were ever looking for a location where you got the biggest environmental bang for your regulatory buck, or perhaps better put, the largest environmental problems for your regulatory flexibility, this is the place. If Lake Samamish isn't worth it, why bother at all? And then he goes on to say, "I also know that competing city policies are no less insistent, but resolving this particular set of trade-offs is as easy as you're ever going to get. We, as a region, have almost two decades now in closely watching these streams," it's three decades now, "both in the city and around the region, and so we have no excuse for not knowing the outcome of our decisions." Derek Booth- And the next. This is just a, this is the kind of rubble that these events can bring down. This is Lewis Creek in Issaquah during the same storm event, and Lewis Creek drains off of Lakemont through the steep ravines and down under I-90 and into Lake Samamish.
I'm sorry, I think we have a question from Commissioner Wasserman.
Was this a 100-year flood or 500, or is this a typical occurrence?
These are not typical occurrences, but they are the large storms.
So that's a 100- or 500-year event, right?
Well, it's more like, we had, one this year, and I mean, this year that this was photographed, and then the following year, we had the same kind of event. So Issaquah repaired the stream, and then the following year, we had the same kind of event, and they blew it out again, and they had to fix it again. Actually, this is Ebright Creek as it's reaching the culvert underneath the Parkway. This is the bottom of Lewis Creek before it enters into Lake Samamish. These are kind of going backwards. And this is a bridge that, when it was originally built, had seven feet below it. Now we have so much sediment at the bottom of that bridge that there's only about three feet, and the water is obviously pretty high during the storm event. This is going up the stream. This is up on the north side of I-90, and this is the sediment and the blowout from the retention pond up in Lakemont of that same storm.
This is an outflow with an energy dissipator. That's the one right in the, it's kind of hard to see, it's dark, but right in the center, it's just kind of overflowing. So this is where the piped water goes down and then just supposedly gets, the energy gets dissipated and then releases into the stream.
This is that Newport Way stream, the year after they had fixed it, before the recent pictures that I showed you. This was a slide in Ebright Creek that happened two years ago before the Frazier slide. This actually happened during the summer, so a natural event. This was storm damage from the Lewis Creek retention ponds that blew out. Obviously, a property owner has lost a good part of land here and has kind of almost washed away his cabana. This is in the upper reaches of the canyon in Lewis Creek after the slide. This is the same landslide. And this was the retention pond after it blew out.
Debbie, you want to get the timer real quick?
That's it, we're done.
Ms. Tiliakos, this first picture, where is this from?
This picture is Heather Frazier's slide from her, it's just in, it's south, no, it's west of 212th Avenue. She spoke last time that we were here.
So this is from the same slide where the woman gave testimony last time? Commissioner Lipinski wasn't here at that meeting, so thank you for clarifying that. Do we have other questions? Commissioner Collins?
Yes. Erica, will you be, will you be addressing bypasses?
What do you mean bypasses?
There were two options, infiltration and bypassing. You haven't discussed bypassing.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you a copy of the whole email, because it gets into the mapping, which I think is really important, and then also talks about infiltration, not infiltration.
Not injection, I hope.
Dispersion. So these are not really easy problems. Unfortunately, they're, they cause a lot of destruction, and there's a lot of devastation that occurs from these, not to mention the costs that, you know, it costs the city to clean these things up. But once you destabilize these slopes, you can't get the stability back into them, so...
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Ms. Tiliakos. We have, next, Ms. Stahl. And following Ms. Stahl, we have Ms. Gee, and then Mr. Crispin.
Eileen Stahl, 21553 Southeast 28th Lane here in Samamish. I'm not going to submit a hard copy tonight, but I will electronically. These are just some points on the erosion hazard overlay, or some comments from Friends of Pine Lake. So if I go over seven minutes, I beg your pardon. Current common practices will not conserve the natural environment and do not pay for their losses. Environmental degradation is an ignored cost many property owners are burdened with. Erosion and sediment control, along with clearing time windows, have helped the health of Lake Samamish since they were introduced. However, that is for development in areas that are not prone to erosion and landslide and landslide areas. Clearing during the wet season should not be allowed in the erosion and landslide hazard areas, even with sediment control measures put in place. Some of our most devastating landslides have occurred at these times of the year. For example, the closing of 112th Avenue Southeast, better known as Snake Hill, during the winter a few years ago. Project-by-project review does not address cumulative impacts. This very planning commission recently exempted a lot-by-lot development from stricter stormwater controls. So there'll be more stormwater from those as well. There are literally hundreds of homes and mini subdivisions built in the overlay before January 2006. Piecemeal development on steep slopes and earlier subdivisions were causing significant drainage and erosion. This led to the adoption of the SO-190, the first overlay, the first implementation. Many of them have no stormwater controls, or in the case of older subdivisions, retention or detention ponds have proven to be insufficient in curtailing runoff to pre-development flows. The drainage from these older developments is in basins that don't have defined stream channels and have the possibility of creating new channels. The implementation of the overlay is to guard against creating new channels and harming the water quality of Lake Samamish. It's important to note that, there was a graph shown at one of our last meetings, and it showed the water quality of Lake Samamish improving every year since the overlay was implemented. I wanted to point that out. Before more, but more significant is the protection of downstream property owners from the destructive forces of runoff into areas where water has not run before. The storm event of December 6, 2007 caused major blowouts of channels along Newport Way and Issaquah that caused significant damage and flooding of property that led to several weeks of costly cleanup and repair. This was not experienced, for the most part, in Samamish because of the protections provided by this overlay. I remember, before we became a city in King County, George Davis Creek blew out the Parkway, and it cost King County millions of dollars in reparations to property owners along George Davis Creek. We have a film of that blowout. We should be following the City of Samamish Stormwater Management Comprehensive Plan, mainly retrofitting of stormwater facilities. The retention-detention ponds in these developments should be brought to higher standards and flow. Transfer of development rights is a key component of the overlay ordinance. This avenue of relief to property owners should be revised to separate it from the current TDR scheme recently adopted and create transfer of development rights down to areas along the eastern side of the Parkway with higher buildings. They should become, they would become view properties with similar market values to what they would have had built above. The overlay is an essential regulation in managing stormwater in Samamish. All indicators are that the future of stormwater management will be, will be the very requirements currently found in this ordinance. It is more difficult to tighten a regulation in the future, and once this requirement is weakened, it will be very difficult to return to it. The city should lead the way by keeping intact essential regulations that were created, especially for the unique geology of the plateau, which it is, as Derek Booth had come and spoke to the council about in 2005. He studied, he's a geologist, he's an engineer, he has multiple PhDs, and he came to the city. He's the one that developed the basin plan for King County before we became the city. The basin plans for the basins within the overlay areas should not be done before considering revising development restrictions in these areas. The basin plans should be done before considering revising development restrictions in these areas. We are including an email communication from Derek Booth, and Erica submitted that to I just wanted to say that Friends of Pine Lake has been supportive of the erosion hazard overlay. We've seen the devastation that it causes. One of the things it protects in Ebright Creek is our last salmon-bearing stream, our wild salmon-bearing stream. We've fought for more than a decade to save that little stream, and it's the erosion hazard areas above and all these slides that keep occurring that endanger these salmon. It's not just property that's devastated, it's, and it's not just the environment that's devastated or Lake Samamish. These fish have been here since the last ice age, and we're wiping them out on our watch. So I just wanted to let you know that. We've been fighting for, for more than a decade to save that stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stahl. Do we have any questions from the commission? Thank you. All right. Next, we have Ms. Gee. Oh, she's, nope. And Mr. Crispin? Mr. Crispin is the last person on the list. We do have Ms. Richardson that would like to follow. Okay, great. Thank you.
Rory Crispin, 3023 East Lakes, Samamish Parkway Southeast. I may repeat some comments that have already been made, but I'm just a layperson here, so bear with me. WAC 365-190-120, we've heard about that. Geological hazardous areas. Let me read it really quick. This is item number one. Include areas susceptible to erosion, sliding, earthquake, or other geological events. They pose a threat to health and safety of citizens when incompatible commercial, residential, or industrial development is cited in an area of significant hazard. So there's three items in that statement. The area has to be susceptible to the event, okay? An incompatible development has to pose a threat. And the area is a significant hazard to the health and safety of citizens. And, you know, so, one of the questions that I thought of when I was reading this is, what's a significant hazard? Is that, isn't a hazard a hazard? Isn't there an insignificant, is there an insignificant hazard or a less significant hazard? When you drive a car without brakes, I think that would be a significant hazard. If you're driving a car with worn brakes, that'd be less significant, but still a hazard. If you're driving a car and the brake fluid is not quite topped off, I'd say that's pretty insignificant. So, keep in mind, these three items have to be met, and if you correct these items, you're not, you're improving the hazard, I guess, making it less hazardous, or the implication that it's hazardous to begin with. So you would think that that's the case. So item number two, under the same WAC, is subsection two, is, "Some geological hazards can be reduced or mitigated by engineering, design, or modified construction so that risks to public health and safety are minimized. When technology cannot reduce risks to acceptable levels, building in geological hazardous areas must be avoided. The distinction between avoidance and compensatory mitigation should be considered by cities as they develop their classification scheme." So the city code, so here we have that you can use technology to reduce this risk, but the city code only recommends avoidance. Most properties are still restricted and need a subjective RUE. This update doesn't address those problems. Unlike other critical area mitigation schemes where avoidance is recommended first, the goal of geological hazards is to minimize the potential hazard through man-made alterations. That's the WAC. An appropriate compatible development can be built in and around steep slopes with appropriate horizontal drainage, correct soil load capability, and stabilization. Remember, a slope, steep slope, the 40%, is 21.8 degrees. And to give you an idea of what that is, these concrete stanchions are nine feet tall, so if you can, and the room's roughly 30 feet across the back, if you can imagine a line running roughly from the wood ceiling down to the corner there, that's, that's 40% grade. That's, to me, not very steep. But that's the, that's the level of, that you have to meet. So if you're just a half a degree below that, no problem. You don't have to go through a geological, or use a G-tech. Above that, oh, you have to get a third-party review possibly and pay for all the reviews. So let me give you some hypothetical of a slope. So let's say that you have 100% slope, that's a 45-degree angle, and you're 25 feet vertical rise. So one would think that's, well, very critical. But if you were to drive piles down 25 feet and support that structure, let's say, on top of the slope, you're supporting at the toe of what would be the slope out there. And what load is going on the slope? You have, there's no load on the slope. So why would that be a hazard? Why couldn't you build right to the top of the slope? Or in the slope, for that matter, if you're putting your piles down in a load area that isn't affecting the slope? And why can't you, let's say you had the same scenario, 100%, slope, 25 feet tall, why not build into the slope? Aren't you then buttressing the soil by the foundation of the structure, creating a retaining wall? If you've driven down the Renton Issaquah Road, 900, Highway 900, there is a cut, a road cut, that has a 25 or a larger vertical retaining wall. And right behind that is a house that was preexisting. And that seems to be perfectly safe. Or, same scenario, 25-foot, 100% slope, what if you make a cut to, at the top of the slope, to reduce that five feet- So one would think that's, well, very critical. But if you were to drive piles down 25 feet and support that structure, let's say, on top of the slope, you're supporting at the toe of what would be the slope out there. And what load is going on the slope? You have, there's no load on the slope. So why would that be a hazard? Why couldn't you build right to the top of the slope? Or in the slope, for that matter, if you're putting your piles down in a load area that isn't affecting the slope? And why can't you, let's say you had the same scenario, 100% slope, 25 feet tall, why not build into the slope? Aren't you then buttressing the soil by the foundation of the structure, creating a retaining wall? If you've driven down the Renton-Issaquah Road, 900, Highway 900, there is a cut, a road cut, that has a 25 or a larger vertical retaining wall, and right behind that is a house that was preexisting. And that seems to be perfectly safe. Or, same scenario, 25-foot, 100% slope, what if you make a cut to, at the top of the slope to reduce that five feet? Now you're under the exemption of 20 feet, and you have a less, maybe a slightly more slope at the top of the hill, but now you can develop the whole lot. So there's all kinds of different variations, and we haven't really gone into the man-made cuts, as I just mentioned, that have, there's also fills that create berms. So, and these would be created from maybe the railroad right-of-ways or street right-of-ways that were being created, and they're just not specifically addressed or exempted, which they should, at the very least, since it's a man-made hazard, there should be man-made fixes to that. It shouldn't count against a property owner. And so, you know, I'm not talking, oh, so there are enough, there are not enough options provided in the city code to comply with the WAC, and they're certainly not recommended here. It's all about proportionality. We're talking about, we're not talking about 100, I mean, we're not talking about 300% slopes. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Crispin? Great, thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Hello, I'm Susan Richardson, 19661 Southeast 24th Way in Sammamish. Just a couple of quick comments. At the last meeting, I spoke, my comment was directed to questions of the legality of the possibility of regulatory takings. And one of the things that I'm concerned about in some of the comments tonight is comments about stormwater, which are, which is a real concern for, for the city. But the erosive hazards overlay really is focusing on protecting the lake from sediment in, in development periods. And, you know, if, if the purpose of an overlay, if the purpose is going to change and you want to use the overlay to protect, to basically provide some of the assurances you would have from the infrastructure of the stormwater system, which is really a city's infrastructure, then basically what you've done is changed the purpose of the overlay and, and basically created a section that's basically used for the purposes of, of the public. And in that case, it's essentially, in my mind, could be argued as a taking for, for public purposes. So if, you know, you know, properties that are in the overlay, not everybody's going to develop. Everybody's still going to have to meet the requirements of erosive soil testing, slope questions, all those kinds of things. So there's a lot of, a lot of protections within, within the overlay if we, I mean, if you can develop. But to basically just say, gee, we just don't want a lot of water running through there, we'd like to keep this so there's more infiltration, that's not the purpose of the overlay. And, you know, there could certainly be some legal questions there. So, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to provide public testimony this evening? Okay, seeing none? I'm sorry. Ms. Gee indicated she did not want to provide testimony. Has she changed her mind?
I've been talked into it.
Megan Gee, 22201 Northeast 28th Place. I just wanted to reference my written comments from June 14 meeting. In short, my comments simply underscore that best available science is not the goal or the purpose of the planning process or regulations. Rather, best available science is merely a tool to be used to suggest ways for the city to meet only one of the Growth Management Act goals, protect the environment by contrast. It's important to emphasize that the protection of private property, which is another goal, is also a fundamental right protected under the Washington Constitution.
Thank you, Ms. Gee. You get the speed record for the evening. That's right, all right. With that, I would like to close the public comment section of our agenda for the evening. And Evan, if you would come back up. What I'd like to do first is briefly confirm with the commission that there's no questions or discussion that we would like to have about the administrative edits that were recommended for further consideration. Commissioner Islam.
Thank you. As I was reading the administrative edits, there were a couple of those I didn't feel, given the explanation, seemed to be within the administrative edits.
Okay.
To expedite the process, I would be okay, though, to see the code language and then make my comments, but at this point, I feel there are some of those are not within the administrative edits.
Would you provide the specific items to staff so that they can make sure that they're providing us with the information that you would like to see for the next round?
So Evan, specifically to note 5-2 and 5-7 are the two that I'm concerned with, whether they meet the administrative edits or not.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Islam. Commissioner Collins, did you have a question?
No. 5-2, is this memo 5?
This is, the title of the memo is Staff Recommendation Memo Number 5.
We're not going through that?
We're not going through that, no. All of these will be moved forward into the next phase of review unless we would like to discuss any of them tonight, or similar to what Commissioner Islam did, identify those that we might want to kind of raise up for further discussion at the next level, the next phase.
I'll just email my comments to Evan.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, great. I do want to note, I believe there was one change to this list from the last meeting, and that is that there was the addition of a recommendation from the public, that's 5-20. So just for the record, to note that that was added between last meeting and this meeting. Is that the only change, or are there others?
There were actually a few more in, and I, forgive me, Chair, I can't probably give you the exact number.
That's okay.
They're on the second page, though, and I would just encourage the commission to re-review that page.
Great. Thank you very much. All right.
But we will be discussing.
We will be discussing them, but, but if we're, I, I think staff is recommending that these proceed. If anyone would like to have a discussion about not proceeding them, we should do that now.
My, my list is 510, I disagree with that. I don't think it should proceed. And 511, without written consent is my comment for it. And 513, I do not think it is necessarily correct. 514, it would be nice if they'd include fee and lieu in, in that matrix. Same thing for 519, fee and lieu and mitigation are not included in the comment, but I think it may well want to be. And 520, the 2009 King County Surface Water Design Manual should be mentioned. And Evan, I'll, I'll send you an email with that.
So on the ones that you don't think should move forward, do you want to discuss that now, or do you just want to discuss it when we get into the details?
You said to discuss it now, that's the only reason I brought it up.
All right, so, so that was 510, you do not think we should clarify that buffer averaging does not allow for a reduction in the width of the buffer for one wetland and the expansion for another?
Do you wish to get into the topics, or do you, you just said to mention things I disagreed with. I don't, I don't necessarily want to debate it now.
Let me clarify. Okay, you want to debate it later?
Yes.
Okay. We're clear now. Anyone else have any comments on this list? Okay, great. So I, I think what we would like to do is those that have been mentioned tonight should not go on any consent list, to be clear.
Okay.
Okay? Great. And if anyone else on the commission would like to be very explicit about having a discussion about these before we go into deliberation, please provide that feedback to staff. We may not actually talk through the details of these until we get into deliberation, is where I'm going with this. But you'll see the recommendation relative to the language before we go into deliberation.
Okay.
Okay? Is that clear?
So we would have, even if we don't debate, we would have one more chance to see the code language.
We will see the code language, yes, and have another opportunity to discuss it if we so choose.
Chair, if I may, I, I just wonder if some explanation perhaps at our 712 meeting or, or beyond would be useful around some of these rather than, I do believe these fall into the nature of administrative edits by and large, and so pulling them off that consent type list may, may elevate the review of these, these types of issues beyond what, what would otherwise be appropriate. And maybe some clarification for the planning commissioners who, who raised the question would be useful in, in making that decision.
Great. So, so we'll see more information about all of these, at which point commissioners that think that they would like to discuss them further can have the opportunity to change their mind, right?
We'll do so, yes, sir.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we're going to go through our amendments. Now, this would be memo number four. And again, we want to talk about whether or not we want to progress these amendments, or, sorry, these recommendations for amendment to further discussion and potentially deliberation.
I have a question on this. Last meeting I was at, some people basically, you know, stated the reasons and did lobbying for it. Is this the time to lobby and discuss, or is this the time just to say, move it forward? Because I, I don't like the opportu, if it's, if it's open to lobby, I want everyone to do it, but I have a feeling only a few were doing that last time, and I found that unfair.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point of clarification. The goal of this particular point in the process is to make sure it is not to lobby.
Okay.
Okay?
Then I think as chair, you need to enforce that.
I will, I will be, be much more clear about that. Thank you. Hold on. Commissioner Collins?
However, if, if the.
Microphone.
If it's going to be deemed not to advance, and you want it to advance, there should be some discussion at that point.
Correct. So, so the, the conversation, the pros and cons, the lobbying, so to speak, should be around whether or not to advance this for further discussion, not whether or not we should have a final decision. We're not making any final decisions.
Right, but if there's, if there's four, how many votes do you need to move it forward?
So we're not voting, and frankly, what we've kind of done is defer to, if, if someone makes a good case and there's some support for moving it forward, we will.
Right, so, so my point is if there's, seems to be the point of moving it forward, then we don't need to have lobbying against it at this time.
Correct. That is correct. Thank you. The other point of clarification that I'd like to make is, what's really important is if we have questions or want more information to be provided to us when we get into the lobbying phase, we want to make sure that staff understands what additional information we need to, to help make, help us make a decision at the point that we're making decisions.
Understood.
Okay? Is that clear? Commissioner Islam?
I'm not sure that I understand the word lobbying means in this context. What I see myself want to be doing, though, is that if I say I'm not interested in advancing something, I would give the rationale.
Correct.
As to why.
Correct.
And if that influences somebody else, that's a decision individual commissioners make, I would not say that's something considered to be lobbying.
Fair enough. That, that may be a rather charged term, but I, I do agree. I think we should all be clear about our, our interest in proceeding these recommendations or not, and the rationale behind your recommendation. Okay? Okay. With that, any other questions process-based? So with that, we're going to start with the first recommendation, and that is to define what fully mitigated, what requirements would need to be met for something to be fully mitigated.
Correct.
Correct?
If I may, Chair, the, in the erosion hazard area right now, if your site is constrained by erosion hazard areas, the regulation essentially states that you cannot disturb the site in the wet season, which is October through April, end of April, except if a geotechnical engineer or geologist provides you with a recommendation to do so and some mitigating techniques. What this amendment would do is specify what types of mitigating techniques are appropriate.
So is it to define the techniques, or is it to define a standard against which whatever techniques would be used would be measured, or potentially both?
Just defines fully mitigated.
Potentially both, frankly. The, the mitigating techniques are largely best management practices that are well-established in development. So I, I'm not sure there's as much distinction as one might think between the two, two flavors of what you just described.
So I'd like to start with Commissioner Collins. Do you have any questions or points of clarification?
No.
Commissioner Wasserman?
No, I'm going to hold off until we have this conversation.
Okay, Commissioner Islam?
No, advance.
Commissioner Coleman?
Advance.
Commissioner Lipinski?
Advance.
Great. I would like to be clear about the distinction between the standard and the techniques, and which thing we, or both, we want to include.
Do you have a question? Evan, is this, is this a prescriptive that we're going to be setting up as opposed to a directive? You have to do one, two, three, or four?
I would view it more as a menu, as I'm anticipating the, the draft regulation, at least, that a, an appropriate mitigation technique would include X, Y, and Z depending on the type of site condition we're addressing. So to, to put this into concrete terms, you may be familiar with the silt fencing we often require around a site. It's kind of a black plastic that gets buried into the ground. Specifying that that's maybe a baseline always required technique. Putting in two layers of it might be something that's appropriate in the wet season, the idea being that if the first layer of the silt fencing gets overwhelmed in a rainstorm, you'd still have another section right behind. That kind of menu approach would be, I think, probably more appropriate.
Other questions? Great. So I think we're recommending to advance this one, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's number one. Number two?
So number two would be, especially in the erosion hazard area, we don't have very specific requirements in our critical areas regulations related to how you address a situation where sediment is leaving the site, where the site is eroding and, and sediment is transporting offsite onto downstream properties or into the lake. What this amendment would do is specify an order of corrective actions. To some extent, this is frankly going to be drawn from our MPDS permit, our stormwater permits, and our Surface Water Design Manual, other sources that currently do regulate this type of situation. For, for frankly clarity and consistency across documents, this, this amendment would, would provide that.
Okay. Hi, Commissioner Lipinski, we'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
Good, advance.
Great. Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, I think we should advance. I just have a question, though. What other, well, I'd just be curious, in, in staff's preparation for this, what other code enforcement tools might be available in addition to this?
Commissioner Islam?
Good, advance.
Commissioner Wasserman?
I'd like to advance, I'd like to ask an out-of-the-box question, if I might. Has anybody ever looked at the thought of, instead of trying to figure out how to get rid of all this water and just trying to maybe harvest it and use it somehow on a mass level for the hill instead of dumping it all off the hill?
I think Commissioner Collins has thought about this.
Did you put him up to that?
How much was that that you're giving him?
There you go.
So Commissioner Wasserman, I'll remind you, this is for during the developing condition, during site construction. And usually, we're talking about, about water that's not very clean. So I, I don't think I could point to a specific example where the harvesting of erosion sediment-controlled water has been contemplated in this city. If we were talking about kind of gray water harvesting for buildings, that's typically a developed condition. I'll remind you, I mean, usually when you're doing the type of, of action you're describing, taking water out of the pond and, and, for example, irrigating a slope, you do the irrigation in the summer. Most of the time, we're collecting stormwater off the site, of course, is in the winter. So to, to hold that water all through the winter months and then use it for irrigation in the summer, you're talking about a very large pond. So I, short answer, no, I don't think that's probably been contemplated in this city. And there, there may be some technical challenges around doing that kind of thing.
Okay. Advance with me.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins?
Advance, I'd like to, specific attention to potentially shutting down a job site and, and what, what will that entail? Most of the shutdowns that I've read about and, and seen code about just do not work well. There are no winners in this thing. So I'm really interested in that aspect.
So I'd like to expand on that a little bit. It sounds like what we're talking about is, is defining what someone should do when something has failed. And I, I'm, I think the shutdown is probably kind of a last, an option of no, up last resort, perhaps. I'd like to understand if that is an option that the city would like to include, and if there are other code enforcement or penalties that also layer into this, to make this something that no developer wants to experience.
I can guarantee they don't want to experience it already, and we can provide more detail.
Great. Thank you. I think we're proceeding, we are recommending number two go forward, and we're on to number three.
So number three, of course, we are getting into the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, so we're changing features now. And what this amendment would do is, is clarify both how the no disturbance area within the overlay is identified, and there's some specific technical language that our consultant has proposed. some specific technical language that our consultant has proposed in the Best Available Science report. And then secondarily, how that delineation is done, and it's probably going to be something that would require a technical review, say a surveyor, to help establish, that would be subject to peer review by the city. This would clarify, frankly, existing practices and provide better language in our regulations.
Great. Commissioner Collins?
I support advance. I really like including the mapping portion of it in this section also, the laner.
LIDAR.
LIDAR.
LIDAR, pardon me.
Great feature.
Great. Commissioner Wasserman?
I'd say advance.
Commissioner Islam?
Advance.
Commissioner Coleman?
Advance.
Commissioner Lipinski?
Yes.
Great. So we're advancing 4-3. Advance. 4-4. This actually is not a recommendation to advance or not, but simply to add this as part of our, not explicitly in scope, but very good things for the council to consider doing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With that, Commissioner, or do you want to introduce it, please, Evan?
And this is frankly just to update maps that the city maintains to make sure that we're using consistent terminology with our code.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Lipinski?
Advance.
Great. All right. Does anybody have any reason not to advance this, or any questions?
I would have one comment.
Great.
In the last meeting, when we did the walkthrough, I made a comment about some of these overlay areas or the, where we have slides and stuff shown on maps. It sure would be helpful if you put topos on there to be able to define how you're determining where this slope is, if you're just, other than just picking a spot on a map.
Great. I think that's been noted. Thank you. So 4-4 is proceed. 4-5?
4-5, again, is a clarification, or possibly a requirement of a standard within our erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay. This is for the areas at the top of the slope that drain to the no disturbance area. And what we're specifying here is that infiltration is required on sites that currently drain to the no disturbance area, rather than sites that historically drain to the no disturbance area. And it is the case that the city has had a changing pattern of development over time. Some of the sites that used to drain over the hillside now drain somewhere else. They've been piped or ditched in a fashion that the water is flowing a different direction. So this would essentially clarify that we're applying this to current situations rather than historic situations.
I'm going to just ask if there are any questions about this. I think it's pretty straightforward. Commissioner Collins?
My biggest question on this is comment 132 in our public comment thing addresses the various sediment levels and how infiltration really works. I don't want to go down the path of infiltration too far. Bypassing it is a much better situation.
Okay. So your issue is not with the--
Infiltration.
--historic versus the current, but with infiltration itself. Do we have another recommendation related to that?
Not directly, no.
Okay. So I think perhaps there's a request in here about looking at where infiltration is specifically noted as a step or a preferred step, and evaluating whether or not that truly is appropriate for that particular place in the code.
And Chair, if I may, I'll remind the planning commission that actually our Best Available Science report did look at this. It was one of the items that we lost in our discussion, maybe at our last meeting. And I think they made a very explicit recommendation. For landslide hazard areas, there was a very explicit recommendation by the geotechnical engineer that attended our meeting that we eliminate the option for infiltration in landslide hazard areas as a source of concern. In erosion hazard areas, that same recommendation wasn't made, but it was suggested that we always evaluate this type of activity on a case-by-case basis. Frankly, to probably address Mr. Collins' concerns in that we put in infiltration galleries or pipes or what have you in areas where we're not going to destabilize downhill slopes.
So you're saying that's already been addressed?
It is, I think, implicitly already addressed in the Best Available Science study and in our code. We can provide more information if needed for Mr., or pardon me, for Commissioner Collins, but--
It seems appropriate.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to the specific recommendation, and that is to remove the reference to historic and change that to current. Is there any other question about that? Great. So we are going to advance that. The next one, Evan, please walk us through. Staff is recommending not advancing.
Yeah. So the current regulations within the erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay, and this is related actually specifically to drainage systems installed for a residential house, a single-family development. And what those regulations say is if you exceed 2,000 square feet of impervious surface total on your site, you have a couple of options on how you deal with your drainage coming off the property. The first ideally would be infiltration. Second would be a tight line, frankly, past the erosion landslide hazard area downslope. And then the third is a more amorphous term, which is the drainage outlet shall be designed using Best Available Science. What the consultant has recommended is that the staff, or pardon me, the critical area regulations specify that Best Available Science right now is a tight line past any erosion or landslide hazard area downslope. Frankly, that poses a bit of a challenge and a bit of a concern. The challenge being that it eliminates a potential option for a single-family homeowner to look at other alternative designs based upon the site-specific conditions and evaluate whether or not there might be an appropriate design for that site. Secondarily, it kind of presupposes the answer to a question that we may not know in the future, that there may be a new Best Available Science-type design out there that we've now precluded by adopting more restrictive language, i.e. identifying a tight line rather than a Best Available Science-designed outlet. So that's why staff is recommending against advancing this particular amendment. It does appear to be contrary to the city council's goal of providing additional flexibility, and it does eliminate some options for property owners.
Great. Commissioner Lipinski?
I agree with staff.
Commissioner Coleman?
I agree with staff.
Commissioner Islam?
I see a bit differences of opinion between what our Best Available Science from the consultant provides, which identifies a specific technology to be adopted. And then staff thinks that there are other alternatives that might meet Best Available Science. What I would be looking for more investigation of the signs, working with the consultant to identify those alternatives. At this point, I'm just taking the word from the staff that there are other alternatives available. Without examples and how they meet Best Available Science, I'm not willing to say advance. So I would like to see more exploration between consultant and the staff about the technical differences here.
Evan, I have a question for you. Maybe I misunderstood this. I thought the ideas were making a code in 2012, and maybe Best Available Science will be different in 2014, and with the way you want to write it, that new science would be allowed, the way their consultant writes it, it would not be allowed. Is that correct?
That, yes, that is correct. I think it's also fair to say that the city has reviewed some drainage design outlets under this current section of code that get to Commissioner Islam's point of the fact that there are sometimes other solutions that make sense on a site-specific basis, and we can provide examples of that.
And I think there, my question would be to enlighten the consultant. If city feels that there are other technical alternatives, consultant needs to be enlightened so that they can provide us objective recommendations. I just simply see that dangling Best Available Science from consultant and city is saying there are other Best Available Science available.
So would you be comfortable not advancing this particular recommendation from the consultant with the expectation that staff will go back to the consultant and provide examples of the Best Available Science alternatives that we've implemented in the past and copy you on that?
I would be comfortable with that. I'm just looking for that more additional transaction between consultant and the staff to understand the issue.
Great.
And just another comment with respect to making it flexible so that we can always adopt the Best Available Science. That probably applies in everything, not just on this section, but any given time, we are looking at the Best Available Science for that time, and every five years or so, we have code changes that we needed to do, so we will catch up as time goes along.
Do you have any questions about the request?
I don't believe so.
Okay, great. Commissioner Wasserman?
Let Commissioner Collins go first.
All right. Commissioner Collins?
I violently disagree with dropping this. I'd like to see this advance. It's probably the number-one issue I'm interested in. We can say that it's a preferred method to bypass a section, but to say that that isn't the preferred method is absolutely incorrect. The AMEC has it completely correct. Bypass is the number-one way. If you don't bypass, you're doing infiltration and a bunch of other stuff.
So I'm not sure you're completely, your interpretation of the recommendation is slightly different than mine, so let's make sure that we're clear about what they're recommending.
Saying the recommendation is to not move this forward. The recommendation from AMEC says to bypass these areas.
The recommendation specifically says that is your only alternative.
I'm modifying, I'm saying advance it, but also you can soften it and say use other technologies also.
Okay.
But it should be the primarily acceptable--
So let me clarify. Staff, the language of the code today allows what you are recommending. Is that correct, Evan? So right now, the language of the code today would have, how would the language of the code today implement--
The language of the code--
Hold on. I'm asking Evan. The language of the code today, please walk us through how the language of the code today compares with the recommendation, and whether or not this particular requirement would be something that would be imposed on a development if it was the best solution?
The language of today, so say the best solution for a given site in the middle of the overlay is to tightline it down to the bottom of the hill. The effect of the amendment that we're talking about would be nonexistent. The Best Available Science design would require that you tightline to the bottom of the hill. That is an option already contemplated in our code today as one of the appropriate approaches. The situation where I think this amendment becomes relevant, and the reason staff is recommending to not advance it, is that there are some situations where tightlining is not the Best Available Science preferred alternative for how you discharge drainage. And that's based on some examples that we've had, actually, in the Tamarack neighborhood, which we'll get into additionally as needed with AMEC or the planning commission. Suffice to say--
We're not going to get into it if this is not advanced. This stops at this point. I'm voting to advance it and talk about the issue. You're, the contrary to that is to have it die tonight. I'm not willing to have it die tonight.
Then move it forward. Let's go.
And we'll move it forward. But--
There's enough votes. One vote isn't enough.
Hold on. No, okay, two things. We're not voting.
Right.
We did have a conversation earlier that if there was a strong--
Yes.
--case made, that we would, that we would advance a recommendation. I want to make sure that in advancing it, we're clear about our request to staff about what we need in order to evaluate this further. So I think Commissioner Islam's request was very clear. And my question to you, Commissioner Collins, is will the response to Commissioner Islam's request provide you with enough information, or do we need additional information from staff?
Commissioner Islam asked to cease text, and I'm going to be looking at text very carefully.
So you want to see, he actually did not--
I want to see it advanced, so that I can--
I have--
He did not ask for specific changes to the code. What he asked for was examples where a Best Available Science alternative that was not tightlining was implemented, and some information about why that was implemented the way that it was. That's what he's asking.
And also, I wanted to make sure that consultant is providing us objective signs. Looks like there's a difference of opinion. I want some exploration in that area in a scientific integrity term.
So I just, so that's a different request than what you're asking for, Commissioner Collins. You would like to see example, an explicit change to the code that might support this amendment, so that you can evaluate whether or not that's appropriate. Is that correct?
I'd like to see it advanced, so we can discuss it. Yes?
I can draft language, Chair, that would reflect--
Thank you. I would just want to make sure you, we get what we need in order to close this issue the next time that we discuss it, because we're going to have to close on issues at some point. Any other questions?
No, but move faster. Can't we just say if anyone has an issue with it, let's do that, so that we can just go fast?
So I want to make sure that we have the information that we need to close, to make a decision the next time we come up with these recommendations. And so if there's, I want to make sure that, so for example, a recommendation to advance is probably not enough information to make a formal code decision. So I want to make sure that we're clear about what other information we need, if any. We already have the Best Available Science reports. We already have quite a bit of public comment. So if there's something else that we need, we need to be clear about that, and I think we have a good example today. Okay. So I will try to move things quickly. We are on, so 4-6 is advance.
So 4-7, if I may, Chair?
Yep.
This is now getting into the landslide hazard area feature. And what we're talking about is the buffer that's applied from the top toe and currently the sides of the landslide hazard area, in particular to steep slopes, what was termed steep slopes, the 40% topography. The consultant has actually noted that there is no Best Available Science support for applying a buffer off the side of a steep slope, and has recommended eliminating that buffer. So this amendment would do so.
We'll start with Commissioner Lipinski again. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question. Why was it ever included in the code in the first place?
I'm not sure I have a good answer for that.
Can you give me any, I'm confused why no Best Available Science is there, and it increases the regulations. There must have been some thought that it did some good, I would hope.
So in 2005, the city took a set of older standards, the steep slope hazard area requirements and the landslide hazard area requirements, and as part of the 2005 update to the critical areas ordinance, combined those two features. My suspicion, frankly, is that in doing so, we inadvertently got overzealous in how we defined the landslide hazard area and applied a buffer, and didn't really think to this particular effect.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman, do you have another?
No, I advance.
Are you comfortable? Okay, Commissioner Coleman?
Advance.
Commissioner Islam?
Advance.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Advance.
Commissioner Collins?
Advance. But I do have one question I'd like to answer on it. If the effect on a hillside is a triangular effect downstream from the site, and those, and that triangle includes a landslide area, is it a sideways buffer, or is it just the tail of the, tail of the currents?
No, and forgive me, Commissioner, I, the buffer itself is really not going to be something that addresses drainage patterns in the fashion you're describing. What the buffer, as I understand it, essentially provides is essentially an area of safety away from the slope, where if you get closer in terms of placing development at the top or toe of a slope, you run an increased risk of a seismic or safety event damaging private property or destabilizing the hillside. This is really a distinct standard from our drainage controls in a lot of ways. Probably the only place it overlaps is around vegetation.
Okay. So we're, I agree with advancing this as well. So that's advance, number eight. Again, this is a not-advance recommendation.
This is. So as part of the Best Available Science study prepared by the consultant, they noted a Seattle study that was done relatively recently, where there was an increased risk of landslides occurring on slopes between 10 feet tall and 20 feet tall. And their comment to the city was that we should evaluate whether or not providing an exemption for slopes greater than 10 feet tall and less than 20 feet tall was appropriate as part of our risk analysis in our regulations. So the actual amendment that we would be advancing tonight, if we decided to continue this discussion, would be to eliminate an exemption that we currently have in our regulations for slopes that are greater than 10 feet tall and less than 20 feet tall, where we have a site-specific evaluation that recommends exempting that slope from regulations. If you advance this amendment tonight, we would eliminate that exemption.
So I have a quick question before we go down the line, and that is, do we have any experience with this being a problem within the city?
None. I'm aware.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll start with--
I also, I'm sorry, I have a question.
We'll start with Commissioner Coleman.
Well, it's just a general question. If the exemption is for slopes greater than 10 but less than 20, what's happening to slopes less than 10 feet tall?
We don't regulate slopes less than 10 feet tall at 40%. Thank you.
So do you have an opinion on whether or not to advance this, Commissioner Coleman?
Are we going to go out of order?
We're going out of order. Yes.
Where's your name tag?
I agree with staff.
Great. So to continue the out-of-order, we'll go with Commissioner Wasserman, just to throw you all off.
Before I answer, I want to make sure I understand what I'm answering here. If we do not advance this, we are allowing site-specific evaluation, correct?
Yes.
And if we do advance it, we are trying to reduce or take away the exemptions for-- specific site, correct?
Yes.
I would prefer not to advance it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Collins?
I'm going to dovetail with what Commissioner Wasserman was talking about. Soil's characteristics are site-specific condition. And everything I've read is saying that soil's conditions are the number one thing. I don't really, the height of the slope is secondary to that. I wish to support site-specific evaluations.
So, that would be a recommendation.
Not to be advanced, or?
No.
Not.
That would be a not advance.
Great. Commissioner Lipinski?
I do have a question for Commissioner Collins. For the site-specific, then, do you think we should discuss over 20 feet?
Yes.
Well, then, we should move this forward because otherwise, we're not going to discuss it.
That's exactly what I asked.
And that's what I thought you were getting at. So, then, I think we should, we should be a different with staff.
So, we have an alternative recommendation, and that is to look at an expansion of the exemption. So, I believe we have two commissioners that are wanting to advocate for that. Do we want, have further discussion? Let's give Commissioner Islam an opportunity to speak.
I'm against the staff recommendation, but for a different reason than expanding. I would like to understand that some consultant indicated, based on their best available size, there are some risks based on the Seattle studies. I would like to understand those risks and with some examples from our city. In staff comment, there is some discussion about specific evaluation. So, I would like to see, based on some past evaluations, what level of risks we are taking by exempting from 10 to 20. So, I'm advancing just to be able to make sure that I understand the risks.
Okay. So, if I may attempt to summarize what we would like to see, we'd like to, we'd like to understand what the risks are and whether or not the risks change based on the height. So, if we go more than the current exemption, what does that mean for us as a city?
And then I have one other request, Evan. Has the city used the site-specific exemption, and what has been the result?
We certainly have used it. It's been in use for many years now. I'm not aware of a situation where we've exempted a slope and it's resulted in a, you know-
In a slide.
-a landslide event or erosion event we'd be worried about. I'm not confident in that answer, so that would be part of the research task I'd be taking away.
Perfect.
Love giving you more work, Evan.
Commissioner Islam, did you have something else you wanted to add?
No.
Sorry, I heard something on this side.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to understand the risks, so I need more meat to be able to understand it.
Okay, great. Any other questions or clarifying comments?
Chair, if I may ask one question. To get to Commissioner Islam's question, I understand that I'm evaluating past exemptions the city has issued and essentially providing feedback to the planning commission whether or not we've had an issue. Is that a fair summary?
Whether, because consultant indicated some risk associated with that exemption, I wanted to understand from our city-specific past experiences standpoint if there is some risk that you have encountered.
If Seattle's had some problems and we haven't, help us understand that better. Perhaps we're using different criteria for our site-specific evaluation. Perhaps we're more stringent. Help us understand that.
Chair, I'd like to ask one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Wasserman.
Evan, I'm curious, on 4-8, should it be a 4-8A and B where you have less than 20 feet or over 20 feet? Because I think there's two different animals we're talking about here.
Yeah. I think we'll need to narrow on this section-
Okay.
...of the code, and it could go either way, it sounds like, based on the discussion. Commissioner Lipinski?
And just to give you even more work, Evan, I'd like to know what peer jurisdictions have done, if any of them regulate over 20 feet or don't overly, you know, what are other people doing?
Great. Commissioner Coleman, did you have something else?
No.
Are we closed on this particular recommendation? Great.
We advance.
We are advancing.
We're continuing our pattern of advancing.
We are, we are, I know.
Everything.
Okay, number nine.
Number nine. So, again, in the landslide hazard drainage area regulations, we have some regulations that are specific to drainage control. And what these regulations say is that we should evaluate infiltration on steep slope, pardon me, on landslide hazard areas. I tend to think of these as steep slopes. I keep using the wrong term. Evaluate infiltration on landslide hazard areas and/or tight lines and/or a best available science outlet drainage design. It's very similar to our erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay text. What the consultant has recommended is that we actually eliminate all of these drainage regulations out of our landslide hazard area code and instead adopt or revert back to the landslide hazard drainage area regulations contained within the surface water design manual we've adopted. And they've done that for two reasons, frankly. One, what our code says and what the stormwater surface water design manuals say are not 100% consistent, and this has led to, frankly, some conflicts in the past on site-specific review between the two departments and the two staffers reviewing the code. Conflicts are bad. And then secondarily, of course, we try and address this as part of the review. But then secondarily, the best available science, frankly, doesn't support the specific standards that we have in our landslide hazard area regulations today. And so, they think it's appropriate to go back to what the stormwater design manual recommends.
So, I'm going to give Commissioner Collins the floor on this and let him start.
Advance.
Great. Commissioner Wasserman.
Advance.
Commissioner Islam.
Advance.
Commissioner Coleman.
Advance.
Commissioner Lipinski.
Just to get Mike's goat, no.
Oh. Discussion?
I've already had it.
All right. I also support advancing this recommendation. So, that takes us to 10.
So, 4-10. This is essentially a clarification of our existing administrative procedure. It does fall into the realm of, is it a standard or is it an administrative requirement? I've included it here just for completeness. And what this does is specifically authorize the city to use a third-party geotechnical engineer to peer review an applicant's geology report or geotechnical report. This is a current practice of the city. We have that authority already. This would clarify in the existing ECA regulations, so it provides additional clarification. It is proposed as a case-by-case evaluation as to whether or not that review is required, which is, again, similar to how staff use that authority today.
Great. So, we'll start with Commissioner Lipinski.
I agree with staff.
Commissioner Coleman.
Advance.
Commissioner Islam.
Advance.
Commissioner Wasserman.
I'd like to ask a question. If I was to say that I'm against a third-party review, would that be an advance or would that be a not advance? Because personally, I think as an architect, and I'm a registered architect, basically what you're talking about is peer review, which basically says that I don't know what I'm doing. So, if we're requiring a third-party review on a geotechnical engineer who's licensed in the state of Washington, we're basically saying that we don't believe what he's telling us, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, my question is, if that's the case, if I have a registered geotechnical engineer, geologist, whatever, that an owner has paid for out of their pocket, why does the city get to say, well, we don't believe what they say? So, my question is, if I'm against this, am I, if I'm advancing or am I not advancing?
So, to answer your question directly, I think you are, frankly, if you're against this idea, we should probably have a different amendment on the table to clarify that it's not authorized, and we could do that. Let me clarify, if I may, first, Commissioner Wasserman. I don't think the city staff are telling, you know, professional experts that are licensed by the state that they're wrong. That would be outside of, honestly, my professional expertise to do. What we do often run into is cases where reasonable people seem to disagree, or the critical areas study doesn't perhaps address everything that appears to be relevant to the question at hand. So, for example, on geotechnical reports that I've reviewed, often we'll get something where it's, you know, it's not real clear what soil testing was done on the site to base the geotechnical report on when the recommendation was made to the property owner and the city staff. Not having a soil pit testing appears to be kind of an error in terms of basing your information. Often, we go back to that soil study that was done by the U.S. Department of Agriculture many years ago now, and that's what we're relying on when we're making these recommendations. What this authority does is it allows the city staff to ask another expert, has this report been prepared correctly and in a fashion that you believe is also supportable? So, it's a way of confirming the evaluation or the analysis. You know, I think it's a fine distinction. Respectfully, I think you'd find often architects will disagree on appropriate things in terms of physics.
No.
And-
So, by advancing this, we could consider specifically defining the conditions under which a third party might be appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
Advance.
Advance, all right, Collins. So, we're going to advance. Thank you. Number 11.
So, 4-11, I remember the Chair may have had a question related to this one. So, I'll direct the planning commission's attention to the Q&amp;A matrix, which is the shorter of the two tables that were handled, handed out tonight. And I'm looking at, very slowly. I'm looking at page two of the verbal, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at page two. I'm actually looking at-
Page four?
Page five, item 18.
Which, which tab?
This would be-
Hold on.
Just in your, just in your handout tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was just in the handout tonight.
Thank you, it's not in the tab.
It's under tab 11.
It's number five, page two, isn't it?
No, pardon me, it's actually number 18, page five. And it's of the table that was handed out tonight. It's the thinner of the two packets, the thinner table.
Good God, I'm having issues. Page five, number what?
YU.
Number 18.
I have it, I'm there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, what this amendment would do is specify a factor of safety that the city would use in evaluating a geotechnical report that would recommend an alteration to a landslide hazard area. The factor of safety that was identified by the consultant was 1.5. Forgive me, Chair, I believe you asked where that 1.5 came from.
Correct.
The answer that was provided by the consultant is on page five, item 18 of your Q&amp;A matrix.
Yes, I'm there, thank you.
I won't read it into the record, it's probably self-evident.
So, Evan, it's correct to say recommendation was between 1.25 and 1.5, and we are taking the most liberal interpretation?
Yes.
Okay. And we could discuss that further as part of advancing this recommendation?
Yes.
Great. All right. Commissioner Collins?
Advance.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Advance.
Commissioner Islam?
Advance.
Commissioner Coleman?
Advance.
Commissioner Lipinski? I also support advancing this, so that one's an advance, number 12.
So, number 12, when we're speaking to landslide hazard areas, in particular, again, that term steep slope, these are landslide hazard areas that are related to steep topography, 40% slope gradient and a vertical relief of more than 10 feet. What we sometimes run into is a problem in identifying actually the location of the top of the slope and the bottom of the slope. And I'll remind you, for example, on Inglewood Hill, you often have a situation where you'll have a very steep area, a little bench, another very steep area going down the hill. And the question comes up, do we look at the entire hillside? Do we look at each steep area? Do we look at a combination of two steep areas and a bench? What this definition does is provide some specific direction, frankly, to the consultant community on the part of property owners and the city staff in identifying the location of that steep slope.
Commissioner Collins?
Advance.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Advance.
Commissioner Islam?
Advance.
Commissioner Coleman?
Advance.
Commissioner Lipinski?
I have a question, Evan. What's the current practice?
The current practice is to require a site survey, a topographic survey, and to use a surveyed definition. The problem we sometimes run into is that the surveyors appear to use a different width between topographic lines to identify a 40% slope. And I can get into the geometry. I warn you, I'm not a math major, so this may get tricky. But it essentially boils down to, do you look at a steep slope that's only two feet tall? Or do you look at a steep slope over a 10-foot vertical relief? And how do you identify that on your topographic lines? There's not consistency right now, frankly, between various surveyors, and what this would do is help us provide that consistency.
So, it's not taking anything away from site-specific staff work?
No, this would, this would be exactly field verification and the methods that we use to field verify a location.
And you don't currently use, use the different, you use one method and then you're just codifying that?
We rely on the surveyor's recommendation at this point, which does vary.
So, he wants to codify a standard for the surveyors to use?
All right. I will advance, but I want some more information. It seems like it's taking away some-
Flexibility?
Flexibility that landowners may have right now. And Cameron's shaking his head, no, but I'm trying, if different surveyors come up with different answers, you could hire a surveyor until you find out what you like. That's flexibility.
I think this is actually more, to me, this is frankly more in the diagnostic realm than the flexibility realm. What we're doing is initially diagnosing what's on the site. I'm surrounded by doctors in my family, apologize for the term, not lawyers, fortunately. So, you know, we're diagnosing what- He's surrounded by lawyers. We're diagnosing what type of feature we might have on the property, and we want to make sure that we do that accurately so we can apply the correct standards and frankly, require the appropriate review. To your point directly, are we going to get some sites that used to say, no, we don't have a 40% slope, that now would meet our definition for a 40% slope? I think that's true. We would get some sites that used to be able to document that they, you know, according to a surveyor, were not steep slopes. I don't know if it gets to flexibility, frankly. Flexibility, to me, is more what we're building into our standards to address the feature at hand.
Okay. We're going to advance it to discuss, so.
So, I support advancing this as well. So, that's 12 is an advance. And maybe you can provide some examples of how the different standards result in different outcomes. Thank you.
Yes.
Number 13.
Number 13. So, what this does is essentially just revise the definition of geologist to include the definition of licensed geologist in several sections of our definition section. A few years ago, the state required that all geologists be licensed by the state. We somehow omitted that update, and we're now fixing that.
And I've been corrected, this is 13 and 14 for clarification. So, Commissioner Lipinski?
Again, I have a question for you. So, if the person is licensed by the state of Oregon but not Washington, can some AMECs currently use them or is the state law trumping and you can't use them anyway?
The state law does govern.
Okay, so, isn't this just a superficial, we don't even need this amendment then, right? If the state says you need a licensed geologist, why are we putting it in our code at all?
We define qualified professional, for clarity, again, for our applicants. So, if we're talking about a geo-hazard, we require that you have a geologist or geotechnical engineer evaluate a geo-hazard of some sort, and that person is a qualified professional. Specifying who or what a geologist is, is what we're trying to do in terms of clarity. So, I think what we're trying to do is follow suit, be consistent with the state. It's a very minor amendment. I would tend to agree with you, but I do think it's consistent.
That's fine.
Commissioner Coleman?
Advance.
So, I just want to clarify, this might, might prevent a homeowner from hiring somebody that the city might consider unqualified if we have more clear statement about the qualifications we expect. Is that correct?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay, in theory. Well, then, I'll support advancing it. Commissioner Islam?
Advance.
Commissioner Wasserman, sorry.
I would say advance, but I have a quick question. Does this, does this already cover geotechnical engineers, this assumption being a geotechnical engineer is already a licensed professional? That's already in there, correct?
I believe so. I'd need to double-check to be certain.
That was my question. If one is listed, does the other automatically become?
I'll double-check, and if it needs to be added, I'll add it in as part of this amendment.
So, we're talking about geologist and geotechnical engineer?
Because they're both licensed professionals.
Thank you. Okay, great. Commissioner Collins?
Advance.
Yes.
Advance.
Okay, great. With that, and I apologize to those of you that stayed, I'm just now realizing that we probably should do the public recommendations first. I realized this at the end of our process, I apologize. We will take that into account for the next time. But we do have number 15 also proposed. You want to walk us through this as well?
Yeah, and this is getting back to our erosion hazard near sensor water body overlay and specifically the no disturbance area. And I think frankly, you heard testimony tonight and you have all along, around a couple of veins of discussion here. One would be to frankly allow development, i.e. subdivision, within the no disturbance area. And another vein would be to eliminate the overlay entirely. The city is recommending that you advance this item for discussion. I do want to caution you a little bit around some of the information that you've heard over time. I do think we have a duty to try and provide some feedback around some of the items we heard tonight, and we could do that as part of your further review.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins?
Advance.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Advance.
Commissioner Islam?
Question. This one is, again, consultant has- Question. This one is again, consultant has provided very confirmatory scientific conclusion from their standpoint that there is no science, uh, behind allowing development in no disturbance zone. I understand staff recommendation, A, there could be purely policy rational, don't have to have scientific rationale to move this forward. On part B, we're providing appropriate mechanisms to address the risk. I feel that's a scientific engineering territory to be able to provide appropriate technologies that would allow development. I would like to see again, looking back to the consultant, who is supposed to be our expert, to provide also an assessment of the technology that could allow development. I didn't see that. They are clearly saying that it's not supportable. I want to understand that difference. I've heard public comments about appropriate technologies available, but I have not seen, uh, provided information about technology from the public to be able to evaluate that. So my heart says that I don't want to advance it, but I'm going to advance it anyway just to be able to get the following information.
Okay. Commissioner Collins, did you have a comment or a question?
No.
Okay, great. Commissioner Coleman?
Um, excuse me. Uh, something that, uh, you can scratch your head about with this, Evan, is should through our deliberation, we determine that we need to keep this overlay that erosion hazards near sensitive water bodies need to be protected, does the city have the mechanism in place or should we put the mechanism, mechanism in place to allow TDRs in those areas? And then advance it. Thank you.
Okay. Can I give a partial answer to that now, Chair, if I may?
Yes.
We do allow for TDRs, um, for these sites to be identified as TDRs as part of our recent TDR ordinance. Uh, the idea that was posited by, um, Eileen Stahl earlier today in terms of using those TDRs down slope at the bottom of the hill, that is not currently within our TDR program. It might be a refinement to Commissioner Coleman's point.
Commissioner Lipinski?
Just, I, I want to advance, but I also would like, and maybe this is not possible, let me know if it's not possible, an estimated cost to the city if you were going to reimburse the folks who own property there if they're not allowed to develop, based on what, you know, land sells for in a developed subdivision? Give us an estimate of what the harm is to the individuals, and then could the city budget pay that?
Ouch.
Uh, I think your premise was correct, that that's probably not possible, but we'll talk to the city attorney about it.
So for the microphone, Cameron Geral, the director noted that's probably not possible, but we'd talk to the city attorney about that. I would also note for the record, we are asking the city attorney to address this question of regulatory takings to the planning commission. You should be receiving that, I believe, in early July, um, as part of your review.
Thank you. So I also support advancing this. So as a commission, we are supporting advancing this. I'd like to echo, I think, a similar request, Commissioner Islam. I'd like to understand what other alternatives would be supported by best available science if we truly are one of the few, if only, uh, cities that have this strict, uh, ordinance? I'd like to understand, there's, there, either everyone else has made a different policy choice, which is certainly understandable, but, uh, I'd like to understand what best available science has supported for those other cities if there truly are other alternatives to address this particular situation.
Uh, Chair, if I may, I'd, I'd like to take two seconds here to, to provide a touch of explanation and, and maybe follow up in our later discussions.
Thank you.
I, I'll remind the planning commission, we asked the, the consultant some very specific questions as part of this exercise. One of those questions was essentially evaluating whether or not the best available science has changed around the feature such that a change to the regulations was warranted. And in this particular case, the, the consultant said, no, there was no change to the best available science. The second question we asked the consultant was whether or not, um, development, i.e. subdivision in the no disturbance area, would be supported by best available science. And again, the consultant said, no. The reason I make these, I'm saying this explicitly is, one of the things we did not ask AMEC to do was go back and evaluate the best available science that was the basis for the regulations in the first place. Um, and I, I would note that some of the comments have challenged AMEC around that lack, so to speak, in their best available science report. And I'm not sure that's, uh, necessarily a, an accurate criticism of AMEC because it was outside the scope of their evaluation. And that may be something for the planning commission to evaluate.
Right. So on that note, what I'm hearing from you is perhaps we need to have some further conversation about, uh, with the mayor and deputy mayor perhaps, about this particular scope limitation that we're dealing with and how it might, uh, influence our ability to provide the council with the information that they might want to have in assessing this particular item. Uh, we may need to think about this in, in a select other areas as well. We can talk about that further in, in some of our planning discussions. I also want to be, uh, clear in the request. We have, we have had, to your point, several different alternatives to this suggested by the public, everywhere from completely eliminating to, you know, some other modifications to the existing code. I, I'd like to be sure that we are presented with some very explicit alternatives to consider, uh, rather than, uh, you know, general, some of the generalizations that we've been working with. And I, I know that there's been a, a, an offer from some of our, uh, public, people providing public testimony to have a discussion with staff about what some of the specifics around those alternatives might look like. And I believe we are pursuing that. I want to reinforce that. Uh, having some specifics to consider and having them represent perhaps the spectrum of choices that we might want to discuss will be very helpful. I see Commissioner Wasserman and then Commissioner Islam and then perhaps Commissioner Collins? Okay, in that order.
We're going down this way?
We'll start with you.
Okay. Quick question, and this may be a, an out-of-the-park question with regards to what we're doing. With the changes that we potentially talk about going back and forth here, has there ever been any conversation with the city attorney about the liability that the city might accept by passing or, or reducing the restrictions or requirements that we have now? If you, if you take away, say, a landslide issue and somebody's house gets buried, does the city acquire that or is it, well, you asked for it, you got it, have a good time? Well, how does that shake out?
So to your, to answer your question directly, I don't think we've had that specific question with the city attorney. Uh, what we are doing is keeping the city attorney apprised of the process as we move forward, and they certainly will be reviewing the, the proposed amendments as we move forward. And, uh, of course, they're answering select questions as we bring those forward, uh, to the attorney. I'm not sure, honestly, your example would necessarily kind of hold up. And I, I understand you're generalizing here. Um, but when we make that kind of decision, we're typically relying on a number of various, uh, inputs to make a decision to allow an alteration to the landslide hazard area. Um, and I think that might speak to liability as well. Did you want to add?
Of course. Cameron Goral with the Community Development Department. It's a good question, and fundamentally, this whole process is about risk analysis. Really is. How much are we willing to take, uh, to accommodate the goals of growth management to accommodate development or the goals of the property owners versus, uh, the protection for the environment? And there is an element of analysis and, and some risk that we decide whether we're going to live with. Our comp plan gives us some general direction. We have some framework from state laws, but these are part of the local choices that you will make. Part of that risk analysis is a legal piece. So Commissioner Lipinski's question about potential takings aspects, Commissioner Wasserman's question is about whether the city inherits a liability if we loosen up regulations, they sort of ring that legal bell. So I will encourage Evan to catalog these questions, talk to our city attorney who's working on this. Whether we get this by early July, I don't know. I'm going to under promise and, and hopefully deliver by then, but we'll see. Um, but, uh, hopefully he can provide some responses to this from a legal point of view. That'd be an input into the policymaking process. It's not a determining factor, but it's an input, uh, to that. So as a part of your risk analysis, you may be able to take that into account. Does that answer the?
Yes, but can I follow that up with a question? If, and we've, we have an example that was issued, I don't know, a couple of meetings ago where somebody had a hill on their property that was specifically on their property. Can that person absorb the liability of what they do on their own property and say, well, it's my hill, it's on my property, if I want to have a landslide, it's mine? Can they absorb that liability if it's all-inclusive in their property?
Yeah. Um, I'm not sure how to answer that question.
It sounds like not within the current, not with the current code.
Well, that's, that's where I'm going with it.
Probably not, because, you know, I, I've yet to come across a risk that somehow respects property boundaries entirely. Um, and even sort of with the best laid plans, um, it's hard to avoid some kind of impact either to adjacent property owners or to the public. So think about this too. You've got not only an impact to an individual property owner and not just today's applicant, but tomorrow's owner buys that property or the next one after that. Um, you've got adjacent properties to think about. Um, you've got, uh, resources, public resources and private resources that exist on those properties. And you've got public infrastructure that can also be put at risk. Roads, parks, any number of other things that taxpayers have paid for, but we need to be cognizant of, these regulations will help protect in the long term.
Right.
So it all gets backed, in a sense, that kind of risk analysis and judgment. Perhaps I'm too holistic a thinker, but I have a hard time seeing how that, the thought experiment in your question of the absolutely isolated case.
Well, well, I guess my question is, if I have a mound of dirt on my property that if it's 20 feet tall, it's considered a landslide, why can't I just take a truck and move that pile of dirt off my property?
It's mother nature.
Well, we can talk about whether the, and that, that's a part of our, our, uh, regulations today. And I think you need to deliberate on those kinds of questions when you get to that point. Can you reduce the hazard by actually physically altering the property? That's, that's maybe the question. Um, and there may be some circumstances in which you can. Um, so I don't think there's a clear black and white yes or no on that particular front. It may be a matter of scale, may be a matter of site-specific circumstances.
That's what kind of ties into that liability question I was asking.
Sure.
Commissioner Islam has a question and then Commissioner Collins.
My question is sort of generic and maybe I'm inviting Cameron to get your perspective on that too. Uh, there are a couple of times today in staff recommendation, and I've seen in our past, uh, meetings too, where staff did not want to advance something even though when consultant asked for advancing. So consultant comes based on their pure evidence of best available science. And then staff says, don't advance it. There might be an alternative available. I see a contention between consultant's view of science and perhaps staff's view of science. And I need that to be reconciled. I don't necessarily see that we could be left hanging where consultant says, no, there is no scientific evidence, and then we get some alternative analysis from city staff, uh, otherwise. So I'm looking for really best available science, objective best available science. And I've heard public comments too, so I'm also looking for public to provide some technology evidence where things are possible. And I think those are necessary to evaluate the risk and be able to make an informed decision in the next meeting.
Uh, good point. And I think if staff haven't been clear about whether our quibble with a BIS report or, or with a public comment is based upon a science issue or a policy issue, we need to clarify which side of the line that, that's on. Um, I think we did ask the consultant and we did not hover over them or see, uh, drafts where they said, well, should we come this side or that side of science? We said, give us your unvarnished opinion about, is there new science or what does that say? So that is their opinion, and we very specifically wanted them to do that without anybody's actual outside influence. So if we differ with the consultant on a recommendation, I'm going to think it's probably not because of a science issue necessarily. Maybe because of either past issue or, or policy choice.
Cameron, 415 is an example.
Right. I think there are some examples, Cameron. And I think, I, I think that it would be, we would like to, I think there's a couple of things. I think staff has perhaps different experience than the consultants. And I think we would like to understand if having a second conversation with the consultant, if the consultant might alter their recommendation based on the additional information that staff provides. It's definitely a learning opportunity for the consultant, uh, you know, and for staff, uh, about whether or not our examples of, of best available science alternatives differ from theirs and, and perhaps whether or not that, that difference can be reconciled. We'd like to understand that.
Sure. And I'll just note, on 415, we have specific direction from the city council to look at that issue.
Correct. Now, there are, actually, there were a couple, and Evan's taken notes on, on a couple of these. So I, I think it, it's just, it's part of the process. And if the, if the consultant does not agree with staff's assessment of best available science, we would like to, I think that would be good information for us as well.
So what I meant on 415, A, identifying the policy basis. I purely agree, there are times where, uh, we might want to take an approach just based on policy, ignoring science. I, I.
Sure.
Agree with that. But when, in this, B, where you were saying, providing appropriate mechanisms, and hidden, underneath appropriate mechanism means technological mechanisms.
Probably, yeah.
And that's where the science and engineering comes in. And that's where I want to understand the contention between, um, objective science that consultant is providing and you are providing.
Apologize for interrupting. I, I think the staff are interested in investigating that issue. Um, yeah. I don't know that we are disagreeing with the consultant saying there are no technological options. I think we need more information on it.
And if I may, I just had one more, uh, accentuation is that we should explore TDR as a way to compensate, for lack of a better word, if any takings happen, TDR should be an approach which should allow homeowners to have some changing of property so that they can benefit from it.
Okay. So I think we have a question about how does the TDR provide relief currently for some of these situations? Just a kind of a reminder for.
Extending relief.
And, and whether or not extending TD, a modification to TDR might be something that we would consider recommending to the council as part of our not in scope but please consider this list. So I, I want to, Commissioner Collins was next, and then Commissioner Lipinski. You've been very patient.
Thank you. Um, to dovetail on, uh, Commissioner Wasserman's comment, when you talk to the attorney about issues, I would appreciate you asking about, um, limiting liability by placing entries on the title. Um, it should be standard language for most of the stuff we do, but I, I wanted to mention it.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Lipinski?
Uh, and I'd like any examples in Western Washington where TDRs have provided value to homeowners that own, you know, four or five acre lots instead of huge parcels.
Okay.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, just a question. Um, Cameron, you mentioned who would be getting some sort of memo. I don't, I don't know if it's going to be a memo or, um, the city attorney's going to be here to present, but I, I do think it would be helpful if he can be here because I think we've got a lot of questions related to some of these things.
Uh, we'll see about that. I won't, I won't promise that now. Um, my guess is probably more of a written thing, but, um, we'll see what we can do. It'd be a, a unique circumstance to have the city attorney actually come to the commission. Let me make a, a note too. We're, we're, not that you don't deserve it, but, but we haven't done it yet. Um, I want to make a note just because we've been, um, talking about the issue of compensation. And I recognize that there's a natural human kind of desire to make, make a sense of fairness here. Um, there is a longer-winded sort of legal precedence about land use regulations that we won't take time to go into. Um, but, um, I want to caution the commission for getting to any conclusions that compensation is in fact required or justified. Um, and it, it's, this is something that is in fact a big deal. Um, and it's not something we do lightly. So, um, and it's something that I will talk to the city attorney about. Um, because land use regulation is in fact a very common tool. It's authorized by state law. We've had these kinds of things in place for a long time. We did not adopt a TDR program as a compensation tool. Um, it is an additional land use tool. It's a benefit for property owners that choose to use it. I like it a lot. It may have an application here too that we can expand the range of use. Um, but be cautious about the compensation conversation because I think it, it could put, put some undue risk for the city that, that we don't need to at this point. And it may complicate your discussions as well. Um, so we'll talk to them a little bit more about it, but that's a, a caution from me as your senior staff personnel.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not at this point. Okay. So I just want to conclude tonight's meeting with, um, I want Cameron again, remind us about our plan for our next meeting.
Yeah. Um, uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Briefly.
Yeah, briefly.
All right.
Well, when planning code first started in Euclid, New York, or Ohio, I'm sorry. Well, when planning code first started in Euclid, New York, or Ohio, I'm sorry. Next meeting is July 12th. The material will be available on Friday, July 6th. That's a week from tomorrow. Our goals for that evening will probably come down to two major things. One would be to discuss the evaluation approach and mechanisms, the tools that the commission can use to help evaluate all of these proposals. You've asked us to provide a, as easy to use but comprehensive format, where you can see the evaluative information in a sheet or sheets for each proposal, and that would help you weigh the pros and cons and understand what kinds of things go into your decision. We've been working on those tools between meetings here. We've gotten some feedback from the chair and vice chair, and we'll get one more round of feedback before we send a draft of this material out to the commission. It is not a done deal at that point. You will have a chance to further refine that, and if we've gotten it wrong, we can get it corrected. So that's one thing, is to discuss how you will evaluate. We won't actually be doing any evaluation. This is more of a meta-conversation. What, what pieces of analysis do you want to look at, that kind of thing, and what's the format for that? Second thing that I hope we were able to get to is to start looking at whether we can divide all of these recommendations up, and there are somewhere in the range of 80, if you include the administrative ones, somewhere in 70 to 80, into a list of major items that will require that full range of analysis, and relatively straightforward minor items. Sometimes we use the term during the SMP process, a consent list of fairly straightforward items. And who knows, there may be a third category before we're done, but at least into those two categories to see if we can simplify our work a little bit. My hope is that we can have somewhat of a lengthy list of minor items, still need review, still need public comment, still may be refined before you come to your conclusions, but that don't require the in-depth analysis, because we don't have a whole lot of pros and cons to weigh. I think the administrative edits probably fall into that, and there may be some things from the other part. So staff are working to see what we can do to divide that into two pieces. I think what I've heard from the chair is that if a commissioner nerds, will have a chance to look at that division, and let's say we've got too many, or the wrong ones in the simple list, that they need to migrate back over to the major item list, that we'd have an opportunity to do that. So that's another task that we're going to try to accomplish on the 12th. There is still a lot of work. As you can see, there's a lot of input to go through, and so we'll be working in this next week to get that material ready.
I'm going to anticipate a potential question from commissioners and the public, and that is, at what point in this process will we start to see actual proposed code language?
And that's a great question. I think it's, it's, and Evan's like, da, 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 da. I know the staff are already working on some of it, but I haven't actually even seen any of it myself yet, so it hasn't actually migrated up the chain at a staff level. My hope is that at your second meeting in July, you can see some of that. Evan has sometimes told me, well, even earlier than that, but I'm going to under promise again and say that that's my best guess now to start seeing some of that language. But it doesn't necessarily have to be all a big stack of stuff? We can work on individual groupings? It's possible that we could work on individual groupings, and maybe some of those simpler ones are easier to start with, with actual language.
This is the internal debate that we're having about whether or not we start simple or start complicated, and we're still having, as you can tell, a little bit of internal debate around that. I think there are definitely a list of issues that are complex and will require some in-depth discussion amongst the commissioners before we get into deliberation and further opportunity for the public to comment. And so we're working through exactly how, you know, the order of priority in which we will go through this. And I definitely am hopeful that, based on our materials for the 12th and the process that we go through on the 12th, that we refine kind of how we tackle, you know, how you eat the elephant one bite at a time, so to speak, so.
That's right. May I add one more thing on the issue of specific code language? You've heard a desire from members of the public, either to generate that or to work with staff on generating that, and we're certainly open to any of the feedback or input in this, in this particular case. I think you've heard a desire to actually find a time to meet with staff. I think staff are willing to do that. We want to try to make sure that we've scheduled that meeting at the right time in the process, not too early and certainly not too late. So I would like a chance to continue to work with the chair and vice chair to find an appropriate window of time during our process to accommodate that. It may be one or maybe a handful of meetings to accomplish that. I think it's actually a healthy idea to do that, and, you know, like any other part of our process, this would be something that would be open and transparent. So this is by no means back in some room somewhere, so if people are interested in a particular subject, they could participate in that.
Any other questions before we close the meeting for this evening? Seeing none, I will call us closed at 9:06 PM. Thank you.